...special meeting of Monday, June 2nd. And we will move into the Charter Revision Commission Council recommendations and discussions. There's two microphones on the dais right here, so if you do any speaking, please use a microphone or come up to the table if you'd like. So I believe the council has had discussions about all the changes, and they were good with everything except they wanted the commission to look back at the 4% or 5% for the budget to go to referendum. So at this point, does the council ask questions? They ask questions?
I think at this point, it's a time for the council to explain why they wish that it would go back to 4% and to make their case to the commission and then for the commission to ask any further questions that they have of the council members.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Mike, do you want to go?
Oh, you want me to talk?
I don't want you to talk long because remember, it's just going to go to the commission.
So I mean, again, for with everything going on for me, again, I'm very, we talked about some other things. I am very disciplined when it comes to what I believe the government's role should be. And the fact that every layer of government is quite frankly, some are actually ripping off the taxpayer. I understand this is the local government, and that's where the buck stops. I don't want my tax, I already pay too much in taxes as a taxpayer. So forget about being a councilman on the commission. I don't want to pay any more in taxes. I already pay enough. And I'm sorry, the government doesn't wisely spend all my money. And 5% is, I was a compromise, but I think we need to be realistic to be sustainable with what's going on in Hartford. Anything above a 4% mill increase, I'm sorry, the shift to the property owner is great. It's no longer sustainable. And for people to think it is, they're not paying attention to what's going on. And then for young people who are trying to buy a home, who are actually trying to rent at this point, the rents are outrageous. We're just continuing to make it unaffordable. And for me, I want, I don't care, I want the council to be constrained. As a taxpayer, I have faith in people who are elected, but I'm not going to blindly follow anybody. Okay? And I want, 4% is a reasonable number, and you should really have a, in my opinion, a very valid reason why you need more, a council can go more than 4%. And that's a lot of money for an Enfield taxpayer. All right? 4% doesn't seem like, is a lot of money. I don't care what your assessment on your home is. I don't care if you're paying rent. And we need, I'm sorry, for me, I will, 5% is nice, but if I have the opportunity to make it 4%, quite frankly, I like to go lower, but I understand. I'm willing to stay at 4%. And I'm sorry, people, we have to be, it's, again, it's to put restraints on government. And this every-two-year stuff, it doesn't matter. You should have the right as a taxpayer, as a resident, to make sure every single year, no matter who you vote for, that your money is being spent wisely. I don't care who's in power. I don't care who the party is. And that's what a 4% number, in my opinion, does. I feel very strongly about it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I've been doing some research as far as surrounding towns that already have referendums for their budget. They're all failing. Their first time around, they're all failing. Hebron, Woodstock, East Hampton, they're all looking for a lower budget. So I'm just saying, I think the lower the number, the better chance that the budget is going to pass. So I would like to see it at 4% or lower. And again, and this isn't coming off the top of my head, again, doing some research. So that's my recommendation, 4% or lower.
Thank you. Councilman Sikala.
I'll just make it quick. I actually don't support 5%, 4%, 10%, whatever, because Counselor Pisner makes a great point. Referendum's going to fail. So you elect the people up here as your Board of Finance. We should be the ones doing it. Inflation is what, 2%-ish? So I don't, I don't know that 4% is really going to get you much cushion anywhere. I think that's a really dangerous number. I'm not even in favor of 5%, but I think it should be up to the council as your Board of Finance to do it.
Thank you. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thanks to the people that have worked on this commission so very hard, very dedicated, very, very appreciative of your hard work. I do not support referendum for budget. And the reason is, if you don't have the knowledge, the background, the information about what is being presented from town staff, because it comes to council from town manager's office and through our, you know, finance director, how can a person make a reasonable decision on voting for or against a budget? It makes no sense. With towns such as Summers and maybe Hebron, or maybe some of the other towns, it might be a little more palatable, it might be a little different. But Enfield, we have a good number of people, and we have a large budget, and there's a lot in our budget to be considered. You've got both the education piece and you've got the town piece. So to have any person be asked to vote on such a budget is really doing a disservice to the public. So I don't support 4%, 5%, whatever percent. I think it's wrong, and I think we're doing a disservice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hendrickson.
I am in favor also of going to 4% just from sitting up here and previous budget deliberations that I've sat through. This makes the council work harder. There are, there are sides that I've seen that we just accept everything that's presented to us, which is not our job up here. We're supposed to look for every savings we can get. And I've watched it for the last four years now, and it's amazing that nobody has any ideas to save money for the town. It's just accepted. So I think going to a 4% referendum makes us work harder to get it under, to get it passed, like Deputy Mayor presented there, that referendums are tough to get through. The people do not want to pay the taxes. That's our job, to make sure we get it under that level. So I am in favor of going to 4% just for the fact that it's going to make the counselors work harder on budget. And you say experience and everything, there's some first-time counselors up here. That first budget you sit down is overwhelming. So it's going to make you dig in. It's going to use your experience that's up here, but the work has to be done by the counselors. And just accepting a budget presented by the town manager staff, which I think does a great job, but all the staff is looking for as much money as they can. It's our job to make sure it's being wisely spent. So that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I'm just going to say this. 4% or 5%, I believe in the referendum because I believe that before this council does an 8% increase and you open your tax bill and it's $1,200 more a year, you should have a say. You should be alerted to why. And this council sitting up here should have to explain why. Now, we just went through a budget, and this is a perfect example of why. We listened to all the department heads. One side said, okay, 750 bucks, we're good with it, go with it. We dug in, we did the work, we got it down to 200 with one of the largest increases ever to the Board of Education in this town this year, because we put the work in. Now, like Bob said, I will spend hours, days, and weeks if I can save a resident $100 because I also am a resident. And this, this notion that tenants think they don't pay rent, but they're screaming that their rents are so high, or they don't pay taxes, but they're screaming their rents are so high. You're paying taxes. Because when that landlord opens his tax bill and it's $1,000 more a month, he's not paying it. I can guarantee you that. You are. So you need to really get involved in your local politics and start looking at what's going on when it comes to taxes and education and stuff. So I think we've proven with hard work, we can move the town forward without just approving an open-ended budget. We did it. And, you know, nobody's screaming, nobody's complaining, everybody was happy. But it was a lot of work. Now, when we get elected to sit up here, I think each and every one of us better be prepared to put in the work, because that's what it takes to move the town forward right. Anybody can sit up here and just say, yep. But that's not how, that's not how life works. So again, 4% or 5%, it's more about the referendum and the residents being notified that they're about to get hit with a very, so that's why the council's sending it back. We proved it. And, you know, certain people said, have trust in your council members. And that's why I ask that all budget meetings be televised, because you've got a firsthand look at how certain people want to do a budget and how other people are willing to put the work in. So that's why we're asking for the referendum, whether it's 4% or 5%. We're just asking you to consider, they are asking for 4%. They want it a little lower. And I know some members on the committee want it a little higher. So after seeing the whole budget process and stuff, I think it was eye-opening for all of us, we'll have a discussion about it. So Bob, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments in regard to the, to the whole process. When this idea of the referendum did come up, we debated numbers and percentages. And one of the first numbers was 8%. And then we, we actually, everybody realized that, well, 8% is, is really a high number, you know, for everybody. We sat down, we, we discussed, then we agreed to 7%. Then we got lowered to the, to the 5%. I'm, I'm still one of the ones who really was not in favor of a referendum. However, I'm still uncomfortable with the actual number. I think 4% is a little too low, and that, that I think it would handcuff the town on certain issues, whether it's the Board of Ed or whether it's the town. Heaven forbid something happens in terms of where we, we have to increase, increase the budget. Now, part of our budget deliberations that, that we discussed, or not the budget deliberations, but part of our issue that we had within talking in regard to a percent increase was, you have to look at town revaluations. We've got another revaluation coming up. And, you know, the commercial end of things has not helped our town. So the taxpayers are taking the hit for it. And I just think that 4% is going to be too low. Not that I even agreed with the 5%. And I don't even know, how much does a referendum, how much would it cost the town for a referendum? Okay? So we have, have a referendum. And if a referendum fails, and it fails again, what's the potential cost that the taxpayers would have to incur for that?
We had that number. It was provided to us.
Yeah. And we don't, and we don't go back to the referendum a second time.
Yeah.
If we do it once, and then if it fails, then we go back to...
Do you have to go, do you have to go to my phone?
Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah. But I'm just, what's, what's the cost of a referendum?
30.
30,000.
Sorry. I was just going to say that I knew that what we had talked about was that it was not going to go back to a second referendum, that if it failed, the way it was listed was that it would go back to 4% if that gets approved, or 5% as it is today. And then the board, excuse me, the town council, would have seven days from that failure of that referendum to go back and try to cut those numbers lower, and then to work on the mill rates. But it was not going to do like the town of Windsor does, which is going to keep going back to another referendum. So it was a one, one-time referendum.
At one time, approximately.
About 30,000.
My concern is the funds, $30,000 for a referendum. Okay? So, but, you know, we, we as a group, you know, we, we gave it, we, we took a little, we gave a little, and we came up with from 8 to 7 to 5. Now, now we're, we're looking at 4. I think that is definitely going to handcuff the town in, in terms of, you know, what we can do for a budget moving forward. That, that's my own opinion on things. Sheila.
Just for clarification, we're, we're tossing around the 4% and 5%, but the way it reads actually is greater than 4% or greater than 5%? Just for clarifications.
Yeah. And again, I agree, we had great, I compromised. I think some folks, I actually wanted to have some skin to gain for the taxpayer to actually go out and do petitions, so I've compromised. But Sheila, procedurally, just want to make sure you understand, if we vote on 4%, send it to the commission, back to the commission. What, so if they reject the 4%, can they reject the referendum altogether? Because, or is it the 5% approved?
So the council already voted to, to give a recommendation of greater than 4% to the commission. The commission is going to deliberate, and they can reject or accept that recommendation.
Goes back to the original.
Right.
Right. So the 5, okay.
So it would go back to 5 if they rejected it.
And so, thank you. And, and again, I think, look, I just, I don't, I hear everyone's, and again, I'm not, we had a really robust debate, and I thought it was fantastic, some really good ideas. But, I mean, but folk, we got to wake up. Okay? And I mean this, I mean, this is nice as it can be. Inflation since the 80s is up 3,000%. So whether it's 2%, 3, I mean, it depends on what number, what government agency sends off for inflation and what you want to believe. Some folks are telling you inflation was transitory and was a good thing. You know, and so inflation, I'm sorry, it is, for me, is just not a valid argument because if you go back to when we came off the gold standard, the dollar is no longer as valuable as it was 30 years ago. And, and then, and I think too, the, I understand the cost aspect, but no, I'm the only one I publicly said numerous times, I don't want to pay for early voting. But everyone's okay with paying for early voting, but we don't want to have a referendum because we're worried about cost. I'm sorry, you can't have it always. I don't want to pay for early voting, but we're forced to. The state pumps the cost down to the local municipality. And again, I want to have, as the state is doing through the deliberations now, taking more and more authority away from the local municipalities. I want to have as much as I can to make sure that I'm, I want to have a say in, I don't, I want to have a say in what's, how my tax dollars are spent. And, and I agree, but you can, again, you can make the same argument that folks aren't informed when they go and vote on Election Day either. So, so at some point, we have to inform people somehow. And we, it doesn't mean we keep, and for me, the referendum's always been about educating people how your money is being spent, which I think if anything comes out of it, that's the greatest gift we can give. Because if you paid attention at any level of government right now and how your money's being spent, you should be upset. And if you're not, I mean, for me, I just don't understand it because I, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I appreciate the 5. We had a good compromise. But I'm sorry, I mean, 4% is a lot of money. 5% is a lot of money. And if, if we continue to go, if revow goes in another direction, I mean, I'm sorry, I went looking at some homes and homes that I, I'm not a realtor, but are selling for over $300,000 that six, seven years ago were selling for 150,000. We talk about, when we talk about spending money on education, we're doing it for the next generation. The next generation can't afford a home or, or a good place to have a rent right now. And the more times we've, we have raised taxes, the less affordable it is for our young people, that we claim we want to spend more every single year on the budget and the education, that we have to spend more and more every year on education, yet we can't even let those folks who now who are getting, coming out of college, they can't even afford a decent place to live without working two or three jobs. That bothers me. And so for me, I'm, I know I'm in a minority, but I don't, I'm overtaxed, and I will say it publicly again, and I don't want to pay any more in taxes. And I, and I appreciate, I agree, we are Board of Finance, and we should, and folks made some really good points. But again, it's up to you as a resident to be educated how your dollars are being spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just for clarification, 4% on today's numbers at the budget is $700 for the average $300,000 house. These are estimated numbers. So if, at 5%, that's a $900 tax increase before the residents can even say a word. I mean, so 4% or 5%, that is a lot of money. And uninformed voters and stuff like that, a voter who's sitting at home debating on how they're going to heat their house this winter, literally buying five gallons of fuel at a time to warm their house, I don't think they really care what's in that budget. $700 a year is a lot of money to them. And I just think they should have a say. And we, as elected officials, the Finance Board, should have to explain it to them. And if we do our job properly explaining it, because maybe the state of Connecticut cut us $7 million, they need to know about it. So that's why I'm all for the referendum. Zach.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the premise of my concern with the comments that you noted there is that what we're proposing is a spending cap. So while you're mentioning 5%, the largest tax increase in the past 10 years, our spending went down by a quarter of a percent. It was a decrease. And so when we throw around 4%, and I, 100%, 4% is a lot of money in people's taxes. But that doesn't necessarily, what we're proposing doesn't necessarily constitute a 4% increase in the mill rate. It's a 4% increase in spending. And so we could have an instance in which our grand list can grow by 8%. We could potentially decrease taxes. But at the end of the day, our hands are still tied at 4% because we have a spending cap in place. And to Counselor Ludwig's point, I think that's one of the reasons you wanted a petitioning process, so that you could have the right to bring up any budget at any moment in time. But I know we're not discussing that. So that is why I felt most comfortable with that 5%. Because I think there's some inherent flaws when we put a cap in, because a lot of the tax increases we could put forward might not even fall under the cap. We could increase spending by 1% and the taxes could go up by 5%, 6%. So that's, that was my hesitation with it. I agree with Counselor Crissati. I had some hesitation about the referendum. But I think there's some things that we've put forward that makes us do things a little differently. We're not going to go back and forth, budget after budget after budget. I think that's an improvement. I do think it's an opportunity to get residents engaged. And for $40,000 to engage residents, we've spent more on programs that five people show up to. So I think there's an opportunity there. I don't necessarily believe that all towns around us are voting down their budgets. Summers overwhelmingly supported their budget. And because, quite frankly, they used Enfield as an example, they said, look at Enfield schools, we don't want to be that. This is what's going to happen, vote for the budget, and they did. So I think 5%, because it was unanimously supported, sends a good message to the town. And I think that optics matter. And right now, at 5%, I can support it. I know when I've spoken to members of my party and my town committee, that's a number the large member of our committee can support. And I think if it goes lower, I think it jeopardizes a significant group of support on a document right now that I think we're pretty unified on. So those are just some of my thoughts. I think the 5% is a reasonable number. I think there, of course, are some faults, as I noted, because of the way the grand list works. But I do think it encourages the council to work harder, because you're right. We're not up here just to say yes. And I know you said you've been watching meetings since, for the past four years, I've been doing it since I was 14 years old, coming on 10 years. And sometimes people come up and all they do is just, yes, yes, like, why are you even here? The job is to go and do the work. And I think this will encourage it to do that and accomplish just that. And I'm comfortable with the 5%.
Thank you, Zach. All right. Any other questions? Because I mean, as committee members, we can hash this out, and it is televised. So I want to thank everybody, committee, go ahead. Come on up, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. One is a procedural question.
Name, please.
Oh, Thomas Cromer, 19 Tyler Road.
And he is a member of the Charter Review.
Of the Charter Review Commission. So I have a procedural question and then just a couple of comments. So the procedural question is, if you agree to send it back to us at 4%, then it comes back to us and we vote, and then do we send it back to the council? And does it then end up as a voting item this fall?
So the council has already sent it back to the commission, and the commission will deliberate. And then the commission has to, by June 19th, has to file their final report. So they can either accept the recommendation and that becomes part of the final report, or they can reject it and it reverts back to the 5% and that becomes part of the final report. And then it comes to the council, and then not later than 15 days, the council makes a recommendation, or a vote, I should say, to send it to a referendum or not, to just kill the whole process right then. And therefore, I should have picked better words to say that. Sorry.
Of all the whole thing.
And then the public, then it kind of goes on, there's a lot of statutes involved. And then the public could also petition at that point to force it to go to the referendum if the council had decided to just reject the entire recommendations of the commission. Or the council can say, okay, these are the 10 items that the commission recommended that we're changing. We can agree to that one, reject that one, agree to that one, reject that one, and the ones that they agreed to, go to referendum.
Great. Thank you very much. So now, just a couple of comments. You know, first, I guess I would say, it's, as a person sitting on the other side of the dais, it is disappointing to see it be so separated. And I'm surprised, because I thought that our commission, which was fairly represented by both sides, came to a conclusion. But boy, it seems clear that there's still lots of division among this group. There's a couple of things that haven't been said, at least as clearly as I want to try to say it now. First, I think Mayor Nelson was spot-on that when this idea was first presented and discussed extensively at the commission, it was about avoiding the risk of some council now or anytime in the future passing a budget that was huge, 7, 8, 9%. And there was uniform agreement that we never wanted that to happen without the town being able, the voters being able to say, I agree. That's how this idea started. The second thing, several of us were very concerned about the concept of a referendum. Because one of the things that I think is important to remember is the size of Enfield, that we're larger than some of the other towns that are going through referendums right now. So a referendum for the town the size of Enfield is going to be difficult always to get fair representation. That's just the reality of what we live through. So there were several of us saying, referendums may not be the best idea, but when it's really high, something needs to be done that gives the voters a chance to say yes or no. And so the real question was, what does really high mean? And Councilman Crissati was spot-on. I was one of the ones advocating for a very high number. And I was one of the ones saying, because I trust in the town council, that if the town council agreed to a budget increase in spending, Zach's point is spot-on, of 5%, 5.5%, something dramatic must be going on. And I trusted that the town council would do the right thing if they were going to approve that. I was pretty resoundly pushed back, saying, no, Tom, 7% is way too high. And you're right, I think I actually started at 8. And so we compromised, and I think you left one number out. We went from 8 to 7 to 6. And at 6, I was really struggling. We talked again, and the number of 5 came up. And what we talked about at that point was saying, remember, in our history, we've never approved a 5% increase, never. And so the point was, that's probably a good point to say, that's when the trigger will be enforced. And we'll have to ask people whether or not you agree. And the town council, who's the body that would have said, I'm approving 5.2, the town council would have the responsibility of educating the public, because you were behind it. But if it's lower than 5, I continue to trust the council and avoid the referendum. But I land on, I think, and I don't want to speak for you, Mayor, but I think in your comments, when you went about 4%, and I know Councilman Crissati said 4%, I get very nervous that that's going to generate more referendums than we want. And it takes away too much of your control. So I am a really strong advocate for 5. I am also a strong advocate for the process of having a referendum at some point. And I know that kind of puts me between you two, because there's resistance about referendums on this side, and there's resistance on 5% on this side. And so I find myself right in the middle. And I'm trying to explain that. I really do believe that the council today and the council going forward can be empowered to make the right decisions. to make the right decisions up to 5%. And if you go to 4, if you recommend 4, and if we approve 4, I honestly believe there's going to be too many referendums. And in terms of my support of 5, please don't ever think that means I want a 5% increase. That's not what I'm saying.
That's right.
I don't want 5. I don't want 4. But I want the trigger to be at 5. Because I do want to have a vote, if the number's really going to be that high, coming from the council. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Seeing no other questions?
No.
We're real close. I mean, we can have our dialogues at the Charter Commission meeting.
We're close to, is there a timeline?
Well, we have a 6:45 public hearing and we have something else after you guys. But go ahead.
Okay. I'll make it quick, real quick. Just, I've been doing some digging on what other town, Phil Dumont, Celtic Court, on the commission as well. I've previously mentioned other towns. East Windsor, for example, does a vote on any budget. They go three times, and they're in their, they've already voted twice, an over 5% initial increase, voted it down the third time, June 10th. Their charter says that when that happens, they get 2% over last year's budget. I don't like that final answer, so, but I just share that with you. Another one is the town of Wilton, who actually just, this is their voting activity. When they vote, they actually ask, "Do you approve the budget? Do you reject it with the idea that it's too high? Or do you reject it with the idea it's too low?" And the combination of the rejections versus the approvals is what determines whether it approves. And they require 15% voter turnout. Wellington, or actually, actually, Wilton also votes on all the capital projects in that referendum. And last but not least, or Bloomfield just had a referendum vote. What they did is they put, one of those towns puts a participation rate of 7.5% instead of 15. So, in the case of Bloomfield, just like 1,800 to 600, they rejected the budget, but the budget is approved because they needed a certain percentage to reject, they missed by 300 votes of voter turnout. So, because of that, the vote was, as presented, approved. So, it just, there's a lot of variations out there. It's kind of interesting stuff, so. Wellington actually does something that I'd love to see. They ask questions in their thing about approving the town budget and the Board of Ed budget to get consensus from the voters of what they support. And I find that really interesting, because everything, you guys did a great job on the budget. But, I mean, you don't, and the reason why towns fail on the budget, I think, because of the communication is not really good. That's the only way you're going to get budgets approved, is really good communications. And I love all these televised hearings, all the hard work you guys have done. You've gone through department by department. It's great. But that's what you got to do in a referendum, the salad, to the, and push the people to get educated about what's in the numbers. Because sometimes, an increase has to happen because of whatever's going on, so. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Nikki, did you want to come up?
No, I agree with what Tom says and Zach's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, seeing no further questions, I want to thank the Charter Revision Commission. We will be meeting shortly to go over this. And I don't think it's going to be a long meeting, but I do appreciate all the work you guys put in. And I agree with the comments that we really all dug in on this referendum. And I think we came up with a pretty decent compromise on everybody's side. So, let's see what happens. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the outside agency funds. And this is just to give us more of a explanation of, we cut the budget in half and all the outside agencies were cut 100%. And then, $100,000 stayed in the account. This is to clarify where that $100,000 went and to discuss possibly putting back the money and different ways to grant these outside agencies the money. Welcome.
Cindy Garry, Director of Social Services, Town of Enfield. Thank you, Alex, because he quickly got this PowerPoint to display for me. Okay. My understanding-
Hold on, hold on. Excuse me. Thank you. Go ahead, Cindy.
So, my understanding were, there were questions about the process of how these grants come to be. So, that's what I have prepared, because the Social Services Department doesn't make the decisions. The decision on if anybody gets awarded comes from the council. So, key points. You award to eligible community nonprofits. Eligible, they have to be, have a 501(c)(3) in good standing in order to apply and be awarded. This has been a practice of the town for at least two decades, as far as I can tell. On average, over the last 15 years, the town council has awarded $120,910 per year of each of those years. These grants, it really is a very small amount in the global scheme of the cost of providing the care and support for all the residents, knowing that there's 42,000 to 44,000 residents. These dollars help extend the reach of the Department of Social Services. And so, I appreciate the partnerships, and I know that the partners appreciate the resources. The applicants are required to align their applications to the mission of the department. If it doesn't align, then that's not, they're not going to be eligible. Process, there's an RFP, Request for Proposal, that we post. We put it out on social media, the website, letting organizations know that they can apply and that they would go online to make that application. We do that January 31st each year. Then, the applications are completed when the organization just logs into Apricot and they can put it right in there. That way, we have the data always to be able to kind of compare year to year if we need to. The due date is usually within a month. So, it's either the 28th or the 29th, we let them go if needed. We then, inside the department, we screen the applications to make sure that they are fiduciary in good standing and that they've completed the application as they're supposed to. And then, we can download all of those applications. The packets you have are all of these pieces, documents and forms that they're completing. You've got a blank template on the top. You have a completed application underneath, as an example. And then, after, after we screen them, we create internally a summary sheet. You'll see that big spreadsheet in front, in your packet. We create the spreadsheet and summarize what the applicant said they're going to do. And we get it on one sheet for ease of council members to review. We then take all, the full applications that we've downloaded with the scoring summary, or the application summary, and that gets emailed to each of the town council's subcommittee members for Social Services. Then, after we do that, the subcommittee meets and identifies scores using a rubric, which is also in your packet, a scoring rubric, to determine which grants, which applications, if any, will be recommended to be awarded. So, the subcommittee for council doesn't make the decision. They make the recommendations to the full council. And then, the town council awards allocations defined in your packet. There's an example from last year. I put everything into a one-pager for finance, so that they then have the documentation of what entity was awarded and how much. Then, I email and mail any award recipients. There is a cover letter. You have, again, a sample that was completed. On the front side is the letter of award. The backside describes the requirements and the amounts and the requirements for reporting. In your packet also is the reporting template. So, they're required twice a year, January for the time period, July to December, and July for the period prior to that. We review those reports. We save them all and we review them for compliance. And we learn a lot from them, because we collect a lot of information from the organizations that help Social Services when we're looking to develop strategies and actions and programs and activities and identify service gaps. That is the process in a nutshell.
Okay. Can you explain one, again, the, there was 200, $198,000 in the account. We removed the 98,000, leaving 100,000 in the account. Where did that 100,000 go that was left in that account?
So, you're talking about the whole of Community Initiatives Division? Oh, sorry. So, the, within our Community Initiatives Division, we have the CARA grant, and that is $50,000. It's revenue from the CDC. So, all 50,000 is budgeted as an expense. Then, there's the Enfield Together Coalition Mental Health and Wellness monies. It used to be 40,000 just to service youth. Over the last few years, we use the 40,000 in program services and planning for all age cohorts. Then, this, the third part of that, page 95, are these, are the different grants in addition to the Commission on Aging.
It's up here now.
And then, you can explain how you-
Bob?
So, the total amount this year of the, the subcommittee of the town council recommended the 98,500 for the outside agencies. And that was the amount that you all were determining whether you were going to restore that.
So, when we, I don't remember voting on that as a council.
It's part of what you do in the whole process of your budget deliberations.
Okay. So, we don't vote on these individual groups. We vote on your budget for that group, for the whole, as a whole.
My understanding is that the subcommittee members share with each of the caucuses the recommendations that came from the scoring process. And then, I can't speak to what you all do after that.
Okay. All right.
But the numbers get put in by finance.
Right. I think that's where the disconnect of some of the council members is. You know, this should be something that should be discussed before it gets to the budget point of things. And I think Bob's going to elaborate on that. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation here. And I do know, through the budget process, that grant budgeting that you use as an expense, we just thought it was revenue from the taxpayer. That obviously was a miscommunication there. So, that line, going forward, I hope somehow we present that, so that we know that that's not something we should consider, that that's part of going to the nonprofits. The second part is a couple of things, just reading through your guidelines on how you score this and everything else. Several of these nonprofits, it looks like they use the taxpayer money to pay salaries.
Some do, yes.
Okay. So, that would be something I would want to see presented to us. As a matter of fact, I'm going to ask for a special meeting, that the nonprofits come in before us and do that presentation. And it's not to hurt the nonprofits, so they can present to us what they do for the community and why we're, why they're asking for money and why we should give them money, because they are helped at a community. I get that. So, it's not a knock on nonprofits. I am-
And that, so, I've been here a little over five years. The first time that I ran the process was February of 2020, and all the organizations that applied did come in and present at council. The feedback was, at that time, that it took too long. And so, then, I was asked to shift it. And so, then, I created the rubric. I created the process, so that it would be more streamlined. And then, the subcommittee is the one that reviews and makes recommendations. I hand it off at that point.
Yep.
You want agencies to come in, I know they'd be happy to come in, because it does give them an opportunity to share. I've got things, folks were sending me information. If, there's not even enough time to go over all the information that they sent, showing how much they can stretch that dollar. Some agencies utilize that, and then, they're getting additional grant dollars from other sources on top of that. So, it really is maximizing this, in their sense, a smaller pot of money.
And I understand that, and I can hear some grumbling about the time and everything else. But I think it's worth their time, and whether we have to limit them to 10 minutes or 15 minutes present, I don't care. At least they get a chance to come up here and explain why it's for. And especially with, every two years, we get different, and it's been a while since I've heard any of them present. And I think they should present.
We're happy to organize that.
And I think that's why a special meeting's the right thing, because I know I had some disagreements with the mayor. I wanted him to come before we even moved the money back, because that would be, my goal is to know why we're moving the money back. But I've agreed to put that money over there, and we'll discuss the rest of it, of the voting.
We'll see how the interviews go.
We will see how the interview-
I'm going to say, interview.
Well, we still have it on our resolution tonight to move the money over. So, I'm on some of it. But, so, I'll ask questions later, because I would like the special meeting for the, should I request a special meeting now?
Yeah. Because this isn't, yeah. This is, yeah. We'll do it at the later part of the agenda.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, yeah, Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Thank all of the nonprofits for their hard work and dedication. I'm going to offer some institutional knowledge. As you know, I go back a few years, and I was around when we did call each group in and interviewed them to no end. It was time-consuming. Quite frankly, I didn't see much benefit to it, because you have vetted out the process very professionally and very succinctly, and I thank you for that. And this council just needs to know a little bit of the history. Having said that, my question is, on this page with the blue on the top, why would we consider biannual payment, excuse me, I guess I'm confused, maybe John can answer. Why don't we just authorize the money upfront that we're offering to readjust? Why is it two payments? Why do we have to give them, or should we give them one portion and then make them wait for the balance? What's the purpose of that?
Well, we usually actually reimburse them. So, we pay them in, after the six months. But we want to make sure that they're providing the services that they are documenting in their, in their application process. So, if you give them money upfront, then there's no way to get it back.
Okay.
Well, you, I guess you could, but it's not as easy to do that.
So, we've got parameters in place. That's all I ask for. Thank you very much.
You have a sample of one of the reports as well, so you can see the depth and scope of the information.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Good. Thank you for being here. John, or Cindy, remind me, so the 50 from column B to D, that is all grant money? Basically, 100,000?
The column B is grant-funded. That's $50,000 grant from CARA. The, everything else, C, D, and E, are town-funded.
Okay.
Okay? And that's what, therefore, we give $10,000 to the Commission on Aging. About $40,000 is spent for Mental Health and Wellness Coalition, and then, the boards and commissions.
So, the, so the CARA grant, is it specific? I'm, I'm just trying to do, make sure, I'm thinking of which pocket needs to be aligned correctly. Why wouldn't we use the grant money to pay for the nonprofits as opposed to using town money?
The CARA grant is from the CDC, and there are specifications on how it can be used. And it has to be used in support of preventing opioid use and prescription drugs of use. So, it's, it's a grant we had to write and were awarded, and the stipulation is you use the monies towards the action plan we submitted.
I see. Okay. So, that, okay, so you, that's why you couldn't cut, John, the money from the budget? That's, yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. And then, with your rubric, I remember putting this together, and I agree it did take long, but I think it's worthwhile. My only question in the rubric, I have to admit, I, again, this is, I know I'm in a minority probably here. I just don't like, it's almost like we're taking- probably here, I just don't like, it's almost like we're taking money and then we're giving it to a nonprofit and they're paying for salary. It doesn't feel right to me when it comes to how we do our budget. I don't think we should be giving to an organization so they're paying salary. We should be helping them, yes, with their services, whatever it may be. I have to admit, I just don't fundamentally think it's the right way to use taxpayer money when we're almost, again, we're going from here to here, then we're paying someone's salary who's not responsible to the taxpayer. Yes, they're doing good, I mean, but my point is, you know what I mean? It just doesn't feel, and I know we just, we just had a charter revision here, and I still think it's a violation of the charter, in my opinion, but I know I'm in a minority there too as well.
All I know is, it's been a practice for a long time. That doesn't mean you can't amend the practice.
I would like to see like one of the rubric change where we're not paying salary. I want it to go to actually helping people with real, whatever, material commodity, something that we're purchasing. We know that we have purchased it to help whoever we're saying we're going to help. That's just my opinion, but I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
So again, now this is where the confusion comes in. You said that 100,000 is grant funded. That's saying 50,000 is grant funded.
I don't remember saying 100,000. I think I said historically, the average amount the Town Council awarded was 120,000.
Right, so what we're, what all of us are, who made the decision to keep the ETC together at 100% and wipe out all the nonprofits?
That wasn't me.
Well, somebody made the cut.
The 40,000 has been in the department budget for probably a decade at that amount. It used to only be used in many grants to the Board of Education for youth.
Well, I was always sold, the Enfield Together Coalition had grants that funded part of that program.
So the CARA grant, that monies is used in support of the work of the Coalition as well.
Okay, so the 28,000 can get added to that, and those advertising can get added? So the Enfield Together Coalition is more than 40,000?
So the 40,000 is general fund, and then CARA and Amplify, the two Amplifies, the Youth Service Bureau grant, the local prevention grant, the enhancement grant, those all go in support of the work of the Coalition, in addition to the 40.
Right, so the ETC is a huge, and this ain't the right word, but drain on all the income that we're getting in the grants and everything else to make that program run. And I sat on that program, Cindy.
So can I clarify? Every grant that we receive, and if you remember, our budget in total, about a third of our entire budget is general fund, the other two-thirds are grant funds. Any grant we receive, we're required to spend it per the grant application and action plan.
No, I understand that, just don't take the grant. If we don't take the grant, we don't have to spend it.
That is true.
Okay, so the 40,000 general fund contribution to mental health and wellness, the Enfield Together Coalition. We sit around a table, and we talk, and talk, and talk, and I am not willing to take 40,000 from the food shelf or the Network Against Domestic Abuse to fund a program like that. I don't care if we're offered a grant and then we have to put up money. I think we have a better use of the money, and this is where the confusion comes in, because I know all of us were like, where did the 100 grand go? Well, it's showing right there. The Coalition was fully funded, and everybody else got cut. Councilman Crisati, because we've got to wrap this up, but I do agree with Councilman Hendrickson, they should all come in individually and just sit down, if anything, and have a chat with the council as a whole. Go ahead, Bob, sorry.
That's okay. You took up a couple of minutes of my time, but I'll let it go.
As much time as you need.
No, I'm good, I'm good. Just saying, over the past seven, eight years, I've been a member of this particular committee in issuing or filling out the rubrics. I think what you have here with the rubrics and all the information that's given to us and the council members that have to do their homework and fill out the rubric and come prepared to the meetings, I know our side was fully informed of everything that was going on, so I don't know where the discord came from on your side, but everybody on our side knew exactly what was going on, and they actually knew my scoring and what was going to be my recommendation, because there were some recommendations here that we did not fund, all right, due to the fact of they did not beat the standards of following the rubric. But I think the rubric did a fantastic job with that. So it streamlines the process, all right? I was not around when the groups came in and had interviews, or if they came in and wanted to tell exactly what their funds are going to be used for. I don't have an issue with that, but, well, once again, if we're going to have a subcommittee, that's what the subcommittee is for, all right? And, you know, it is brought back to the council, I get that, I understand that, but all these agencies here are well deserved, and for us to, you know, kind of like scrutinize, you know, what they're actually doing, everything is upfront. It's right here. And I think the way you have done things, I think it's been a great process, and the people that have been involved with it have done their job, and the recommendations have been made. And so I've been always supportive of this, I will continue to be supportive of this. They should have been part of our original budget, but it wasn't, but it's going to be added in. Hopefully, everybody can agree to it, I'm hoping. So this is where I'm at, but I think the process and everything that you have done and with direction of John, this is a streamlined process, and you are to be commended for what you do here. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep, you're welcome.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll be quick. Listen, as far as the groups coming in, I'm in favor of that for all the reasons mentioned. We're short on time, so I won't rehash that. An additional benefit that I see, though, is let the groups come in. This is a free commercial for them. It's free advertising. Tell us about the good work you do for the community, sell yourselves. There also might be citizens and residents that are in town that are not aware of these services, maybe new to town, just not aware that these groups exist. So I see it from a different angle as far as, you know, not just the money aspect of it, but I think it's a win-win to show the community exactly what they offer and the good work that they do, because we know they do it. And, you know, sometimes people don't have Facebook, they don't see that. If they can see it here on YouTube, I think that's a huge benefit, so I think it's a win-win to have them come in. I think it's worth the time. I know it's going to be a lot of time, but it's time well spent.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor? We are now adjourned. I'd like to call to order the Water Pollution Control Authority Special Meeting, Monday, June 2, 2025. We're a little late, it started 6:45, so can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Sacala.
Here.
Commissioner Crisati.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Ludwig.
Here.
Commissioner Mangini.
Here.
Commissioner Nasuda.
Here.
Chair Nelson.
Here.
Vice Chair Pisner.
Here.
Commissioner Russo.
Here.
Commissioner Antonella is absent, and Commissioner Ungary. Ten members are present, one is absent.
Thank you, Sheila. This is a resolution regarding the setting of the public hearing for the 25-26 sewer service fees and rates. Whereas the Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority values the opinions and comments of its constituents, and whereas, in accordance with Section 86-52F, the Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority must hold a public hearing on the proposed sewer service fees and rates for the upcoming fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority shall conduct a public hearing in the council chambers at Town Hall 820 Enfield Street on June 16, 2025, at 6:45 PM, on the proposed sewer service fees and rates for fiscal year 25-26. They prepare June 2, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. I'll entertain one motion to make a correction under the first line, resolution regarding the setting of the public hearing for the 25-25 sewer service fee rates. It needs to be 25-26.
Motion to amend.
Second.
All in favor of amending? Opposed? It's unanimous? All in favor of setting the public hearing? Opposed? And we are keeping the same rate as last year, it is not changing. John?
He hasn't stated that publicly yet. He's still looking at it.
Okay, so I retract that statement.
Right.
Till we find out. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Next, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of June 2, the regular Town Council meeting of June 2. And we're going to start off with a public hearing this evening for the 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposals. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilor Sacala.
Here.
Councilor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Commissioner Antonella is absent. Commissioner Ungary.
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
Thank you. The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Friday, May 23, 2025. Town of Enfield legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, June 2, 2025, at 6:50 PM, to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposal dated this 20th day of May, 2025. Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. The ground rules for the public hearing are, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time, so everyone will have the opportunity to speak. B, after each person who desires has had the chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. C, after those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. Please refrain from personalities. Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak about the Neighborhood Assistance Karen?
Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street. I'm also a member of the Board of the Hasville Institute Conservancy, and this is my normal annual speech I give, SPEAL. It's basically Connecticut corporations can pledge their tax money directly to an organization that has applied and been accepted to the Neighborhood Assistance Act, and the money goes directly to the nonprofit, and then they get to take it off as a tax credit on their tax returns. So this is a real good program for the town. I encourage any corporation out there that wants to do a good thing for their town and help different organizations that are approved to better themselves, that they give as much as they can. The maximum's 150,000, so, you know, if they pay that much in taxes, you know, I'm sure the organizations in Enfield that are on the list would be more than happy to get a good bulk of that money, but unfortunately, it never amounts to that. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to a prayer by Councilman Ungary.
My prayer tonight is focused on the Enfield High School graduating class of 2025. Heavenly Father, we ask you to keep your hand upon all our Enfield High School graduates as they receive their diplomas later this month, for they are embarking on a new adventure. Guide their every step, whether they continue their education, join the military, attend a trade school, or enter the workforce. Change can have its challenges. If there be any fear or addiction, we ask you to remove it. Mend any broken hearts. Make any darkness in their life flee. Show them their full potential, help them grow strong through this change in their lives, and remind them that this is a time for a fresh, new start. We ask that you reveal yourself to these graduates as a loving, dependable God that knows their every heart's desire, every trial they've been through, every joy and every dream. Guide them to make good choices as they transition from a high school student to an adult with adult responsibilities. In Psalm 139, your word says, "Your thoughts toward us are more numerous than all the grains of sand in the world." Help us to be mindful of each other as you are of us, supportive and encouraging. Help us to be far-reaching to those graduates who may not have supporting families and who may need some extra encouragement. God, we ask you to help all our graduates to prosper, thrive, and embrace the path that lay before them. Help them to seek you and listen for your guidance. It says in Hebrews 11 that you are a rewarder to those who diligently seek you. Bless the faculty, parents, and all who have worked to make this special day happen. But especially, we ask you to bless the class of 2025, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Ungary. That was very nice. Next, roll call, please.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Councilor Sacala.
Here.
Councilor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
And Councilor Antonella is absent. Ten members are present, one is absent. Oops! Sorry, John, I didn't see you come in there, sorry. Eleven members are present, none are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire and emergency, there are two means of exiting the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors and walk a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, out the rear doors, and also a safe distance away from the building. Thank you. Next, we will have, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 19, 2025.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, thank you, Bob. And the regular meeting of May 19, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Two abstentions. Thank you, Gina and Bob. Next, tonight, special guests, we have none this evening. Moving on to public communications and petitions, who would like to come up and... Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair, and she'll state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so, and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 PM, each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communications shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct, and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. Who would like to come up and speak to the council? Ma'am? Ma'am?
Thank you. This is Chris Line, 90 South Road, representing myself. Two comments. One is to applaud the folks who put together the Hazville Visioning Meeting that occurred last week at the Powder Mill Barn. The asset that the Powder Mill Barn is to us is pretty indelible. It's nice to be back in there after decades ago. I used to dance there, but it was really well organized. It was very interesting. A lot more people could have been there to appreciate the work that was done by the group that is supporting the Hazville Institute. And I would like to applaud them for the hard work they've done forever. The Hazville Institute building itself, and because of the history of it, the fact that the library started in it long ago, and then eventually moved to that little round building on School Street, which some of us in our youth actually used. I would like to ask that someone consider public... Make an arrangement for public tours of those two buildings, since the visioning is needed for support of the community, four things to do in those buildings. We ought to see what they look like inside. They have been well... One of them's been worked on and is in good shape, and we need to see it. So I'd like to find a way for the public to be able to go into those buildings, maybe a short, short series, maybe two opportunities or three. The other thing I wanted to bring up is this completely different thing. Yesterday, it's the beginning of Pride Month, and no surprise to you, there is a... was a visibility gathering on the steps of this town hall. Friends, community showed up. Our Lieutenant General, Susan Beisiewicz, showed up, and some of our council members showed up, and it was great that they did. Wanted to thank those who did for showing. What I would like to say is that from now on, when we have an opening to such an important month as this, that we also see the mayor and other members of the council show up too. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Pat Thibodeau, 20 Cora Street, Enfield. In 2019, Namder Realty Corp. requested to subdivide the Enfield Square property. They argue that greater flexibility in ownership might attract tenants or investors who prefer to own rather than lease. The application deeply concerned the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioners feared it would limit Enfield's ability to shape a unified vision for the site. There was hope for something like South Windsor's Evergreen or West Hartford's Blueback. With subdivision, such cohesive development seemed unlikely. At the meeting, Councilwoman Marie Pisner, speaking at two of the hearings, called the mall her hub. She envisioned a future with outdoor dining, lush green spaces, and entertainment. Quote, "I am looking for that new breath of air again, as so many of our residents are," she said. Her words captured what many felt. Enfield Square wants function as our downtown, our shared place. The PZZ approved the subdivision, and I was critical at the time, but after rewatching all four hearings or meetings, my view changed. The commission wrestled with growing frustration as its legal authority narrowed. Yet by voting unanimously, each member took shared responsibility, and that was an act of integrity. So what was the legacy of that vote? Namder and Manson Asset Management bought the mall in late 2018 for $11.4 million, and after the subdivision was approved, The Wall Street Journal reported in 2023 that the parcels, including the target site, were sold for a total of $17.6 million. They made money, but Enfield likely lost leverage. That brings us to the Woodsonian Resolutions on tonight's agenda. We're modifying the financial terms, including the tax incremental financing, to make the deal more favorable to the developer. But are we giving up too much leverage? While the Woodsonian proposal broadly aims towards the community's hopes, it's unclear whether it fully delivers. Enfield residents, as evidenced in both public meetings and the CROG survey, envision a walkable, well-connected destination featuring housing, retail, dining, green spaces, and entertainment. There is strong support for a movie theater. People want a place that lives up to the mall's past role, not another car-centric strip mall. Walkable design in particular was one of the most consistently expressed community priorities. Residents called for sidewalks, trails, and safe connections to surrounding neighborhoods. So let's ask the hard question. What happens if, a few years from now, the project doesn't reflect that vision? What if there's no theater, no green space, too many dollar stores, and too few reasons to gather? If we're giving away our leverage now, what tools will future town leaders have? The town may need leverage later, and this is it. Why not structure the TIF as performance-based incentives tied to milestones that reflect what the town truly wants? The mall was woven into our sense of identity and community. To realize the vision we share, the town must be an active partner and hold on to every bit of leverage needed to guide this project in the direction Enfield deserves. I urge you to reconsider the TIF agreement as proposed and link it to clear, measurable outcomes that reflect our community's goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Turner?
Mary Ann Turner, 7 Meadow Road. As I was putting my notes together, I didn't realize that everything I want to talk to you has to do with Massachusetts. I'm feeling a little uncomfortable here. So, some of you, not all of you, and I'm assuming through your caucus, you should have heard, Springfield's dumped this week in 56 million gallons of sewage in the Connecticut River. I am appalled. I've sent out photos of it. It's disgusting. I'm talking about toilet paper floating down and other things. I won't be so descriptive, but you should be able to understand what I'm telling you. I have spent the weekend, and actually, back on May 22nd, that's when I started to really pay attention, but this weekend kind of got my ire up a little, because I sent out some information, because I went and got on the Springfield Sewer Commissioner's link that as soon as they start dumping, they have to put out a report. And I have copies of those reports, which you don't need me to send you, but if you want them, there's a lot of them. And they happen within minutes sometimes, and we're talking millions of gallons of sewage. Now, remember, it's in Springfield's... The way it works there is their rainwater and sewage runs together. It's not separated. So that's why they get overwhelmed with it, and they have to dump it. Now, you know, want to be really annoyed is that you put... This council and councils before you made sure that Enfield has a great sewage plant, put a lot of money into it. The people in this room put dollars behind it, and I saw on your budget where the Sewer Department... I'm sorry, I don't remember the water pollution control here, had a slide that said they did not have one problem. I was pretty proud to hear about that. But I will tell you, Massachusetts is not doing us any favors, and I am more than happy to send things. I will tell you that I have taken it upon myself to kind of beat this drum a little bit. I have sent a letter to the EPA Administrator Lee Zeldin, because one of our state reps made a comment to me that, "You're just bringing this to our attention now, because this has been going on since 1800?" That's despicable. If it's been going on since 1800, that's a big shame, and we should be doing everything we can to stop it. It harms our Connecticut River. It's named after us. Vermont and New Hampshire would not like it if it was being dumped in their backyard. So I reached out to Attorney General Tong, Congressman Courtney, who responded to me today, Senator John Kissel, who sent a letter out to DEP, and Mr. Santinella, Mayor Nelson. You and I spoke. You had also talked about if there was any way we could do some legal things with this. The town manager, Chris Bronson. And I will tell you, you're going to hear about this from me as much as possible, because it has really gotten my attention, and it should have your attention, because we are going to build these beautiful luxury apartments right on the Connecticut River. And by the way, I did send a letter to the owners who are going to build that to let them know that they are going to have sewage slapping up on their shoreline come after they build this thing. Now, you may think that's no big deal, and maybe by the time it gets over the Enfield dam, it might get a little less less. I wrote... So, an article just a few weeks ago, that Long Island Sound was very upset because their beaches aren't swimmable. We should be so upset, too. If I can't get through all three of the items on Massachusetts, I'll come back. I will forward... I think I've forwarded the stuff to you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm hoping that you shared it with your caucus. I know that Mr. Minority Leader also received it. I'm assuming he sent it... gave you that info. If you have not, I will make sure that it gets to the town manager, and all of you can get it in your packet. But you should expect to see me a lot if Massachusetts keeps dumping millions of gallons of sewage in our river. The other thing that I want to just touch on is Massachusetts cars being garaged in Connecticut. I brought this up during the budget hearings, and I know that it's maybe not the best that people don't like it, but if we're looking for revenue streams to bring money back into Enfield, let's start with the people who are not paying their fair share. And that... And I believe that we should be able to put together a program that maybe starts out with education, and... Hang on one second. I want to work with public awareness, and if you need to stop me, let me know. I know that Councilman Russo told me I had an extra 20 seconds.
She was short of that.
It's an inside joke. Anyone... I'll come back.
And a question to speak for the first time, sir.
Good evening. Eric Drew in 221 Broadbrook Road. Firstly, the... Shout out to the new extension on Town Farm Road. That multi-use path is coming along nicely, other than there is some erratic driving that happened. You know, didn't think anybody was injured. You know, there's just some tire marks in the grass, and they're on the path. Sadly, we did recently have a tragic loss of life in the same spot. Of course, referring to the incident involving a motorcycle versus pickup truck. I cannot... I will not call it an accident, though, because I don't believe in accidents. Rather, I do believe in bad design and a lack of a safety culture. In this case, I'm not sure which party is more to blame, Grassmere Country Club or the Town of Enfield. Grassmere because they continue to utilize a blind driveway when they have an alternate driveway 50 feet away that doesn't have blind spots. Or the Town who allows that situation to continue. Even at a higher level, we just redid this road, 2019, I believe, and rather than redesigning it as a modern east-west arterial that it is, we treated it like the old Town Farm Road it is and just repaved it. Blind spots, shitty sightlines and all. So, you know, I feel like this town is complicit here. You know, why don't we have a safety culture here? Why don't we revisit Division Zero Safety Initiative? We shouldn't be losing lives having these injuries to our town that are preventable. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Seeing none? Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Turner, 7 Meadow Road. Vehicle registration abuse. It's time we acted on it. Connecticut law requires that vehicles garage or primarily used in Connecticut be registered here, that would be Enfield, within 90 days of them deciding this is where they're going to live. 90 days. I know for a fact, and if my neighbors are listening, I have two cars that are... They've lived in my neighborhood now for two years, and their cars are still registered in Massachusetts. And I don't know the numbers on the assessor, and let's just make something up, but if every car that is registered in Massachusetts but housed and garaged in Enfield, they're... Right now, I'm looking at two cars that are not paying $1,000. $1,000. Do the math. Add them up, okay? Because you're telling me that you need to find the revenue streams, and I'm only saying, pay your fair share. Now, the proposed campaign, I want to start with education. I am sitting... I understand that people that may feel like we're invading people or something. It's the right thing to do. I think we could have a public awareness campaign. It can be through mailers, social media. We could do door hangers, which we've done in the Blight Group, which is another subject. We could send a letter through the town manager, and how... You're going to say to me, "How do you even know who they are?" Because my guess is, if someone's receiving a bill for their taxes for their house, but they're not getting a tax bill for their cars, that's a flag. Everybody in this town most likely drives. They should at least get a letter saying, "Hey, by the way, if you have a car in Connecticut that's housed here, you need to register it." And we get them to do it. Then we could get a little pushier, and I believe that the assessor could then push out something a little harder. The police could get involved, because I think that they're all around town all the time. And I know that you were absolutely going to hate the last one, but see, click, fix is a great way to get things moving sometimes, and I think we should be using it. The bottom line is fairness and revenue. This town is losing revenue that it should not, and those dollars are used in both our schools. And the last one I'm going to talk about, which is probably going to get me in a whole lot of hot water, because I do not have any children in this school, never have, and will never have them. But it's come to my attention that it's possible that people who are in the drop-off line have Massachusetts cars. So the question is, are the children from Massachusetts going to Enfield schools? I'm not exactly sure how you'd figure that out. I'm not exactly sure how the superintendent does his job. But I'll tell you one thing, if somebody's got a grandchild and the child is living with them in Enfield, going to an Enfield school, and we're paying for them to go to this school, which is perfectly fine, then I want to make sure that that child stays in Enfield and not mom and dad picking them up and bringing them back to Agawam, because that's not fair. We have students here who need those dollars, and I am asking us to figure out a way to do it. Thank you, Ms. Pisner. And, Mr. Mayor, I think the economic development is looking for something to do, so you just give us a little bit of opportunity.
You've made that very clear. Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else? Seeing none? We're going to move on to... What? Okay.
Sorry, just real quick, just following on to what Mary Ann said. You know, I don't think we need to spy on our neighbors. There's a real simple way to fix this. Get rid of the auto car tax. Shift it all onto property. You won't have to worry about it anymore.
Okay, moving on to the councilman communications. John, anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Didn't you hear me go? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to just address a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the Veterans Council for an amazing Memorial Day parade. It was a great day, and it's always a pleasure, and also want to thank them for the good weather to walk in the parade. That made it extra nice. I also want to respond to a couple of comments made by Mary Ann Turner. First of all, on the out-of-state license plates, I think this is one area where we are in total agreement. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, you know, you and I have had many conversations about this. It's been a passion of mine from the beginning that this is just... It's not right that people who live in town and use our services have cars that are licensed, and they pay taxes out of state. I think the least we can ask is that people pay their fair share, and I think we are in real total agreement, and other border communities have the same issue. And I know that you've... You and I have discussed how we can work together to, you know, start slow and make people aware of what their responsibilities are, and, you know, I will do whatever I can, and I know the rest of us on my side of the aisle really support moving forward with some program to recover some of this lost revenue. On the issue of what's going on in Massachusetts with regard to sewage, I have heard from Mary Ann. We have reached out to DEEP. I have spoken with them twice today. I've spoken with Senator Kissel today. I have spoken with the representatives from Suffield and Windsor Locks, who are aware of this issue and are aware of the law. of this issue and are aware of the longstanding problem that we have had with, with Springfield. I know, from what I understand, our town attorney has spoken with Joe Courtney's office. Congressman Courtney is also aware of this. This has been an ongoing issue. And I do want people to understand that unlike our water treatment facility, the, the system in Springfield, because it takes both stormwater and wastewater, if there is not a release when there is, when there are these extraordinary rain issues, what will happen is that the sewage will back up into people's homes. And that is why there are 23 different locks or valves that are opened up into the Chickaby River, the Mill River, and the Connecticut River when we have extraordinary rain circumstances. We are trying to make sure, as grotesque as some of the pictures that we've seen are, we're trying to make sure that we are not creating, or that there is not a public health issue that's being created by this, and making sure that the monitoring that's supposed to be happening is actually taking place. I don't have answers today on any of this. DEEP is working hard to get me the answers that they need. Senator Kessel and I, like I said, we met this afternoon. We are waiting for them to respond to us so that we understand, first and foremost, that there's no public health issue that's being caused by this, again, in spite of the grotesqueness of what we're seeing in the river. So that's what I've been doing. I, we can't fix a age-old sewage system in a city that's been around for years. There's just not a quick fix. So we are working on whatever we can on this end to try to mitigate this and make sure that we are not creating a health issue in the, in the river. And so I, I just wanted to take a minute to address that. And beyond that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Gina, anything? Bob, anything?
Yes, I do have a couple of things of, that I just want to mention. First of all, it was a pleasure to march and attend the Memorial Day Parade. Lucian LaFay did a fantastic job in the Veterans Council for a wonderful afternoon honoring those who made the ultimate sacrifice to the service to our country. So it was a very good day, and remember that primary purpose of Memorial Day is remembrance. So that's the first thing. The second thing that I want to just mention that we're all given our, our blue books. So if you're interested in, this is brought out by the Commission on Aging, it's a directory of senior citizen services, and I notice there's a few people out in the audience. Just make sure you get your blue books, okay? And this Thursday morning is the law enforcement torch run for the Connecticut Special Olympics, which starts at Coles Plaza. Nine o'clock, the run starts, and all the athletes from the Enfield Stars will be running specific legs through the town of Enfield. I know it goes down Cole, of Coles, down Elm Street, and then all the way up Route Five, and they actually run to, the first leg will end in Glastonbury. And the state games are June 6th through the 8th, and we do have a good contingency of athletes that will be attending swimming and track and field. There's also soccer, tennis, and cycling taking place. And opening ceremonies are Friday night at 6:30 at Jestau Field at Southern Connecticut State University. And if anybody's looking for me, I'll, I'll be there the whole weekend. So that's the other thing. Tomorrow night at Enfield High School. And, you know, once again, this is a program that is done annually with the Enfield High School, Enfield Stars, Best Buddies Program, JFK Enfield High School. They have a annual track meet. So, and that starts at 5:30. It's a great community event to see all these athletes with disabilities having a good time. And then, and I call it disability. And then after that track meet, I hope that most of them are going to go to the concert afterwards, to have a good time, grab a, grab an ice cream and listen to some good music. So those are just a few things that I wanted to mention. Also attended the grand opening of Zen Leaf on, on Elm Street. We wish them the very best and look forward to their partnership with the town of Enfield. Adult Edge Graduation's Thursday night, and I know some of us will be attending that. I think it might have been a couple of years ago, we had a group come in and give us a presentation about vehicle registration. This was a group, I believe it was run by Connecticut State Police retired, retired people. There's an actual firm that, that was out there, and I know that they had talked to us in a session. Mike, I don't know if you remember that or not, but they actually read the license plate and they do the investigating throughout town. So I think maybe this is something that we can explore moving forward with that vehicle registration. So that, that is a good point. You know, people have to pay their fair share, so I am definitely in support of, of that. And that's, I think that's, that's it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to echo, the Memorial Day Parade was wonderful. Thank you, Veterans Council, for the invitation. And like Councilman Crissati just pointed out, the purpose of celebrating Memorial Day is to honor those that have fought and given their lives for us. So thank you. And I think this is the first time in a very long time I've seen so many people on the side watching the parade. It was really very refreshing, and it was heartfelt, and that was enjoyable. I do want to also thank the St. Gahan Parish Board, I guess, if you will, for the wonderful fare that they put on Thursday, Friday. Unfortunately, Saturday it got rained out, but I think they had a good attendance. I know the kids had a great time on the rides, the ones that were there, and the food was phenomenal, so that was a good thing for the weekend. And I know, Marie, you were there pumping beer.
I was.
You did a good job.
Beer and wine.
Because I got one.
Beer and wine. It's my job.
I do want to brag about Enfield High School Men's Lacrosse. Wow, they broke their record, and Coach Hannigan went all out. They won their division, and Wednesday night, they're going down to Trumbull to participate in the championship game against St. Joseph. So we want to wish them the best, and we want them to come back as champions of, state champions, I think is what it is. So we're really excited about that. At least I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Just a couple of things through to the mayor, to the town manager. Just can we get an update on where we stand with the audits, both the town and the Board of Ed audit as well? If we could get an update on that. And the other is receiving a lot of phone calls, you know, through the mayor to the town manager regarding Powder Hollow, the baseball field, and the, the length of the grass. It's not being cut, so I'm assuming that the contractor has not turned it over to the town yet, so. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Russo.
Thank you. Going to give Chris some more work, so keep your pen ready, Chris. Just one item, through the mayor to the town manager, and then I guess to the DPW. So just hearing from residents on Will Star Circle, they're just wondering, part of that roads 2021 project, where do they stand as far as getting their road repaved? Are they, are they close? Are they up next? Are they on deck? Are they on the bench? Is it next year? Looking online, there's not really much information, and they're looking for some answers. I think it just says the project is under design. Kind of a rough winter for them over at Will Star Circle, so they're, they're eager. They're hoping they're, they're getting close. So just looking for an answer for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ungar.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate Kenneth Hall for attaining the level of Eagle Scout. They had a beautiful ceremony for him this weekend, and I presented him a proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the town of Enfield. So congratulation, Kenneth. And I also believe our own attorney Tyler is an Eagle Scout. Is that true?
Cub Scout.
Oh.
Close. I, I failed on tying my own knots on my shoes. That's why we're low.
I stand corrected.
Councilman Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager, just driving down Route Five, and I am getting complaints. All the banner signs and advertising signs are, seem to be growing by the day over there. If we can have somebody just take a look at all of those.
Down at the Mass line, he's referring to.
North Thompsonville, yes, yeah. All the way to the town hall tonight. And the other thing, I just want to, Mary Ann, on your license plate thing, I am glad that you brought up the educational part. Some people do forget. I know two years is not forgetting. Friendly reminders are nice that the town sends out. I did get one for my dog license today, a nice email, so it just, a friendly reminder on education is a great way to start, anyway. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. I apologize, I would be remiss not to mention that we are celebrating Pride Month, month of June, and as Chris Lang did mention, some of us did attend the opening ceremony yesterday. And I think that what's very extremely important that we all must remember is to respect others and to honor other people's beliefs and ways and positions. And it was a little bit, you know, it was very disappointing that only a couple members of our council and, you know, not too much of the public was there, you know, to celebrate. But we are in the beginning of the month, so hopefully, you know, people will come out and will, you know, show gratitude and respect to our Pride Month. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Councilman Ludwig.
I'll leave the most of the heavy lifting to the mayor on this, but interesting, for, for the sewer situation with the, with the Connecticut River, just do a little revision as history. The state was going to shut our plant down, so that's, so when everyone goes, everyone complains that they have a separate sewer bill. Well, the state was going to shut us down because we had to come up the code because of the prison that we had, it overwhelmed our system for all those years and never, never paid their fair share. And then that deal that was made in the early 2000s was a terrible deal for the town of Enfield. So we had to spend $40 million in a low-interest loan to fix our plant, to bring it up to code, yet, and I know this has been an issue, and you, we've, I know we've dealt with this was years ago, the fact that they, I, I'm sorry, look, I don't know the details. I'm not an environmentalist, but I like to be one. When you dump sewer into, to the river, how is it not hurt the environment? I, I, I mean, I get it. Like, oh, I understand we're going to be politically correct and say there's no danger to the public and all the other garbage, but at some point, as a border town, we need our federal representative, this should be a federal issue, who should be able to step in, you know, instead of coming, I'm sorry, look, I'm going to be a little political. Instead of just coming to the senior center asking about questions, this should be, they should already be up here and take care of this, because we had to spend $40 million on our plant to bring it up to code, when again, the state didn't pay us the fair share with the prisons, when everyone, when the pilot money was supposed to come through. So Enfield always takes it on the chin. Always takes it on the chin. And this should be a priority if it's, and again, I'm trusting, you know, mayor's sentence, I'm trusting what Mary Ann said as well. I've seen it, we've dealt with this. At some point, we have to say, again, since we, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but maybe there's, we should be taking this to court and saying, we're trying to revitalize our, our river district, and, and then opening up the river so people can enjoy it. There's eagles that fly there, it's a beautiful section of northern Connecticut, if you're getting, and yet, it's okay because you take in rainwater. And by the way, it rains all the time now, you know? And I won't get into another conspiracy theory, why it rains so much when you see, what you see in the sky. But again, we can have that discussion another time. When you see grids of stuff going over Hartford, you wonder what that does. But I have to admit, this, it, it amazes me. And I'm not, and I'll defer to the, the mayor, and I know he has some things to say, so I'll say that. But there's no way that's safe for anybody. And the fact that we had to spend money, and we always do, and yet, we just got to take it on the chin because we're a border town when someone's dumping raw sewage into the river for whatever reason, and we have no recourse? I'm sorry, I don't buy that at all. And it goes, and I'm sorry, this is where I disagree, and the, Councilor Crissati is 100% right. We had a company come in, a license plate reader, and again, this is where I am libertarian. I don't want anyone taking photos of people's license plate reader when they're paid on commission. Okay? I'm sorry, what's, when they're in a neighborhood, they're looking at someone's plate, and I'm going to go take a photo of that one since I'm sitting here. I'm going to go take a photo of that one since I'm sitting here because I get paid on commission. And the individual at the time said, he tried to make me feel better, he goes, only 40% of the, of the photos we take, we process. So what happens, the other 60%? Oh, by the way, everything's hackable, okay? And I understand we live in a society where there's cameras all over the place, but, and I may be, again, in the minority on this, but I believe Middletown just used their cameras to start sending tickets to people who are speeding, which I'm sorry, is outrageous to me. It's outrageous to me. So when you start opening the door, using cameras to start going after people for whatever reason, I like Eric's idea, let's get rid of the, the car tax altogether. You should only have to pay when you purchase it as a sales tax, and you shouldn't have to pay another tax on it again. That is the best idea I've heard, so thank you, Eric.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Chris, I think you have a great idea about us looking at our buildings in Hazardville. I do know that the North Central Chamber of Commerce had a lunch in there last year. I had bought a ticket to go and couldn't, because they had a snow, a snow day, because it happened to snow that day, and I couldn't make the next one. But Powder Hill Barn is definitely a treasure, and so I agree. I think it would be great. I know there's a gentleman here in town who does tours of Thompsonville. I'm not sure if he, the last name, I'm sorry.
Jim Malley.
Jim Malley. I'm not sure if he does Hazardville or not, but it's something maybe we could discuss. He does. Okay. Well, there we go. Mr. Thibodeau, you're right, I did say that. And that was my vision for the mall, and it still is. But we don't own the mall. So the people that are coming in to renovate or develop that mall, they're giving me part of my dream, they're giving me some mixed use. They're giving me condos, high-end apartments, they're giving me some storefronts, hotels, and they are saying entertainment, but we don't own it. So unfortunately, we can't tell them what businesses to put in and what businesses not to put in. Mary Ann, I agree 100%. I'm a South River Street girl. My house abutted the river. And as a kid, I couldn't go in it. And as a young adult, it started to clean up, and now we have our boat, and we take it on the Connecticut River, and it's nice. So it's very disheartening, and I hope we can do something about that, that raw sewage. Massachusetts. I'm one of those grandmothers that does drop off and pickup, and I count the Massachusetts cars. I have brought it to the attention of the superintendent, I've brought it to the attention of our Board of Ed Chair. That's as much as I can do, is to make them aware of the fact that there are more Massachusetts cars. Now, I've been told grandparents live in Massachusetts, we're a bordering town. I get it. I get it. But I think it's something that should be looked at. I had the pleasure, as well as Mayor Nelson, of going to the ERFC and celebrating their 31 years of community support for our young children. It was a wonderful day. Tracy Joseph, the, the new CEO, is doing a, a good job. She's trying to revamp and reinvent some of what's been happening there, working very hard to bring in some grants. So I am very interested in, in working with her and, and hearing what she has to say about it. Again, the parade was really great, seeing people on the side. Even better, the ceremony, the town green was packed, and, and the ceremony, as Lucian says, is always the meat and the potatoes of it. So I was really happy to see so many people there. And tonight, I want to give a shout out to all our first And tonight, I want to give a shout out to all our first readers. Tonight is the award ceremony for them. It's my understanding, talking to many of our teachers that are in the early grades, that the new reading program that was mandated by the state, that we had to pay for, is actually a very, very good program. And our kids are actually learning how to read. So, I'm very happy to hear that. And I have to say, my grandson, Vito, is a kindergartner, and he is a first reader tonight. So, congratulations to all the first readers out there. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. For some reason, we missed on the agenda this, this week, the donation of the benches on the bike path. Little John, the sign factory, has two brand-new benches. He would like to donate to the town, providing that the town installs them, and he just wants a little plaque on it, you know, that he donated them. And also, this is kind of a joint venture with him and somebody else. And I'm going to speak for myself, as we get older, we tend not to be able to walk long distances without having to relieve ourselves. And I think a porta potty would be adequate at the entrance of Eucology Drive going into the dump. It could serve as the dog park, and it's about halfway on the bike path, because currently there is no place to relieve yourself. So, I think it's a small expense. I think it's worthwhile. You know, we spent a lot of money out there through grants and stuff, getting this bike path improved and done. It's beautiful, but I think we just need to finish it off. And the two benches are a great idea, and I want to thank Little John for that, and the porta potty at the end. I'm going to ask for consensus to get it on the agenda, because we are going to have to approve the funding for it, whatever it is, and it can, you know, whatever length, time. But let's get this wrapped up. They've been talking about this for a couple of years. And also, the gentleman, Eric, had mentioned the tire tracks going up over the dirt onto the new bike path. I saw that myself. I've seen, and it's more than once. So, before that, I even, I saw, that whole intersection now is very, very confusing. And because the bike path is so wide, people remember that Town Farm Road exit used to be exactly where the bike path is now, and I think people are getting confused. So, I have reached out to the DOT, somebody I know who works in there, and I've also, because Broadbrook Road is a state road, and I've also talked with Chris, and we are working on who, and we will assume the cost of doing it if the council agrees, but I think that whole corner needs to have a guardrail put in. Maybe we can take the guardrails down away from the video cameras that were put up and put them along that corner, because I truly think, if we don't, somebody's going to get seriously hurt or killed right there. So, I thank you for bringing it up, because now I know I'm not alone. Chris is aware of it, and I don't want to revolve, I don't want to reveal my source at the DOT, but I would like to thank her very much, because she is going to see what she can do on that end, at least just to get us permission to be able to put the guardrail up on Broadbrook Road. So, great points. As far as the sewage, storm drains into the sewer system, yep, correct. And Springfield's been there since the 1800s, correct. But so is Thompsonville. And for many, many years, we have spent many, many millions of dollars smoke testing our sewer system and disconnecting every single house in Thompsonville, because we were doing the same thing. And we had no choice. It was either do it or get fined. When Mike was mayor, he had a ultimatum, get fined or replace the sewer plant. He replaced it. So, we're tired of hearing excuses. Now, I'm not going to be so, you know, politically correct. There's tampons and dispensers along the boat launch in Enfield. That is not acceptable, okay? We're trying to develop our riverfront, and this is out of our control, but I guarantee you, if Enfield was doing it, we'd be getting fined drastically. So, I would ask that the town attorney consider what it would take to file a suit, because, again, I'm tired of talking about things. Rain, whatever reason, it's happening, and it, and this flow seems to be okay now. It's, well, it rained a lot. Well, that's not acceptable. We're supposed to be cleaning up the river. How come all the people who are all so green about save the eagles and save the river, they're not up in arms on this? They're making excuses. Well, I don't want to hear excuses. We're trying to redevelop the Enfield riverfront, and look what's happening. So, I would ask Tom, you take a little bit of time and see, maybe put him to work, and see what we can't do about filing a suit against whoever, but it's got to stop. We need to bring national attention to this. You know, maybe Massachusetts, you know, their congressmen and senators are like ours in Connecticut, and they don't do anything for their state. They're too busy worrying about becoming president, but we need to get their attention. And then, I see the Democrats, you know, they brought their pride flags in. It is Pride Month, but they failed to mention, it's also Juneteenth. And, you know, those flags might mean a little bit more if one of you actually flew one on your house, because I drove by, and they're not on any of your houses. So, making a political statement up here, like I said before, this is not the place to do it. Do it on your own property, which none of you do. So, it's 100% political why those flags are up here. And that's all I have. Thank you. Town managers report.
I saw Cindy had her hand up, Mr. Mayor, just didn't want to preempt her if you were done, or if she was going to be recognized.
I was just going to make a basic statement here.
Oh, Juneteenth?
Sure, Juneteenth is coming up. I was, actually, thank you for bringing that forward. Going to mention that at our next meeting, June 16th, because it comes after. But just, just to clarify, the pride flag should not be considered political. It should be considered diverse. It should be inclusive of all people. I have an American flag on my house, and that-
And that includes all of that also?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so why isn't there an American flag?
Why we have these flags is to show support for the Pride Month. My house has an American flag. As a member of the DAR, I'll bring in the Daughters of the American Revolution. Thou shall not fly another flag or wear clothing that represents an American flag, and you should have a light on your door illuminating your American flag. So, I have no other flags. I have no Connecticut flag. But the point being, it's a message to the community that we welcome all people, all members of our community. We're all inclusive, we're all diverse, and that was the point. Thank you.
All right. Town managers report.
Yes, just briefly, thank you. I've taken down my assignments from the council. I'll get back to you on those questions. I would like to remind everybody that we do have our first concert in the series starting tomorrow, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, behind Town Hall, so I hope everybody can come and join us for the first concert. And I would also just like to send a thank you to the ladies of the garden club. They're out doing their beautiful plantings around our fountain. Last week, I went out and thanked them, and then I looked out today, and I saw a young couple getting married, enjoying the flowers and the fountain, and it was just beautiful to see. So, I thank them for their time and effort and their hard work to make Enfield a more beautiful place. And that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Town attorneys report.
Okay, good evening. We'll be happy to take a look at any options that may be available, but it's, it's going to be like David versus Goliath, and we don't have a slingshot, is what I would tell you going in. But we'll still have Larry, and we'll put our heads together also to see what options you have, because it's easy to say, well, let's file a suit. Those things then cost a lot of money and involve a lot of time, and the money may be better spent and time someplace else, but we'll be more than happy to take a look and see what options are available. Over the weekend, I did have several conversations with the town manager about this issue, and I did, as Councilman Santinella said, contact Congressman Courtney's office. Congressman Courtney has contacted and reported to Attorney General Tong, who's the chief law enforcement officer for the state of Connecticut, and I believe that's our recourse to start with in Enfield, because you're talking about a navigable waterway. It's, it's a federal issue mostly, well, mostly, it's a federal issue. So, we need the federal government, basically, to step up and do something to protect the citizens of Connecticut, of Enfield, Windsor Lock, Southfield, even those in Springfield, because all that you've said is 100% correct. We get hammered, and yet, north of us, there doesn't seem like to be anything that's going on. So, politically, I believe, is the solution, is a political one rather than a legal one, but again, we'll be more than happy to take a look at it. The other thing I wanted to report is on the Deer Park recycling project that we spoke about a couple of weeks ago. The Department of Environmental Protection in Massachusetts has scheduled a hearing through the East Long Meadow Board of Health, and that's for Friday, June 13th, 4 o'clock, and I am planning on going to represent the town's interests there and make a statement consistent with your very articulately written note and letter that we already discussed. Larry, by the way, has researched some of the issues that you talked about with regard to solar last time, and getting some tests and all of that stuff. So, I, actually, I think it's probably too long for a discussion right now, but Larry is available to talk privately with you, and then perhaps, if it's something that needs to come before the council, the mayor's the time, decide, tell the mayor, tell me, and we'll be happy to have Larry make a presentation. That's okay.
Why don't we just invite him to the next general governance meeting, Tom?
That's a great idea.
I think that would work out.
He's here.
And then, if it elaborates from there, or excels from there-
That's a great idea.
Have it maybe part of this special meeting that Bob wants.
I believe it's in July.
Okay, well, Larry's here, so Larry will be, yeah, nine to five. Okay, thank you.
All set, Tom?
All set, unless somebody has a question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions for Tom? Seeing none. Moving on to reports to special committees. Go ahead.
Just update on the joint facilities, the roof projects. Parkman Roof was approved by the state. We will be getting 70.1, 70.71% reimbursement for the roof there. So, there's two more parts that need to be completed, and it will be going out to bid soon. Silver Petrasili is working on that project. Also, Alcorn, the state of Connecticut, denied our reimbursement for that because there's not enough education taking place, but we, they were instructed to put that project out to bid. It's almost done being completed, and it will be going out to bid by the end of June. The other two roofs that were in, that we talked about having done were Stowe and Crandall, and the documents are being processed, and they will be, being submitted to the state by the end of the year. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Do you know if they're going to have Parkman's Roof done before school starts?
No, it won't be, but-
Will it be done this year?
It's hard to say when the documents, the documents were probably, I believe, going to be done by the end of June, so we'll see where they are.
All right, just keep us posted, because that's, that was the one that was bringing the most. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Report to a special committee through our mayor to a town manager. The Fourth of July Committee is looking for an updated map, and I don't know if you got the request, because you were copied. Okay, so will you reply to them directly? Thank you.
I'll send Cindy?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So, I just want to make a comment regarding the Social Services Subcommittee, because I am the liaison on it, and I did go to that meeting along with Counselor Crisati, and we did look over this, and we did make some cuts, because I knew it was going to be a very hard budget. Our job at that is to take the money and then bring it back to our caucus and explain it. Our job in budget is to look at where the money is being spent. So, the caucus did know that I was there. They did know what the money was being spent on, so I wasn't remiss in not advising them of what was going on. But again, we have to have a certain number so that we have something to budget with.
Thank you. Councilman Russo.
Not exactly a report of a committee, but we are looking to meet the Leisure Services Committee probably in the next few weeks, just trying to iron out an issue regarding signage over at the pickleball courts at Mark Twain. So, the regular pickleballers that are over there, there's high demand for the courts, which is great. People are using them, but they're just looking for some signage regarding some basic ground rules, etiquette, decorum, that everyone can kind of live by. And I guess they've been kind of petitioning the DPW for it for a little while now, and, you know, hasn't really been any movement with that. So, just looking to get that done, maybe bring everyone in the room and see if we can hash that out and find some common ground. So, probably in the next few weeks. I already spoke to the chairwoman, Lori, and I spoke to Bob, so we'll see if we can get that worked out.
Good. All set?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? No. Okay, moving on. Unfinished business, a resolution to appropriate funds for social services grants to outside agencies supporting the Enfield residents. $98,500, it was tabled on 5/19/2025. Be resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from general fund revenue, appropriate fund balance 98.5 to general fund non-departmental charges, transfers out, and contingencies. Transfer to Social Services 98.5 from Social Services Community Initiatives, general fund transfers in 98.5 to Social Services Community Initiatives. Network Against Domestic Abuse Amplify Inc., EDC Educational Resources for Children, Enfield Kite, or Enfield Food Shelf Kite, and Enfield People Per People. And Enfield Home Front Team and Loaves and Fishes, date prepared 5/14/2025, prepared by John A. Wilcox. Motion's made and seconded. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Then we have to, we have to move off the table first, I think, sorry, just for, just to be, yeah.
Entertain a motion to-
Motion to remove, yeah, from the table.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to remove the section where it says, "From General Fund to Network Abuse Amplify Inc." to the list of them until we arrange the meeting, which will be a special meeting of the council with the committees and Cindy to actually go through, I guess, an interview-type process, and then the council will decide on who gets what. So, we don't want to, we want to put the money in the proper account, but we just don't want to disperse it at this point. So, the money will be there when they're interviewed. If they're accepted, they will get the money.
Second.
No, you got to make a motion. I can't. I will make a motion.
Second.
To remove that.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing none.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, if I understand this correctly, what your intent is to send this back to the Subcommittee, or-
No.
-to have the, these groups come forward to the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Santinella. Your mic's off, John.
Sorry, my apologies. So, I just want to be clear. So, the second from, down to the bottom, that's what we're striking.
Including the other page, including the back of it, John.
And the back, yeah. So, from the second from, the amendment is to strike the second from down to the last bit. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to be clear.
This is just until they come and do the interview process. I understand, Councilman Mangini and maybe Gina, you guys actually were part of the interview process years ago, but there's current council members now that weren't, and they want them. So I got to respect that. So any more comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none. All in favor to amend? Opposed? Abstentions? Seven in favor? Okay, and then roll call, please, on the amended resolution.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Crisati.
Against.
Counselor Hendrickson.
For.
Counselor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Nasuda.
For.
Mayor Nelson.
For.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
For.
Counselor Russo.
For.
And Counselor Santinella.
Against.
Seven members in favor, four against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is new business, the consent agenda, resolution to transfer funds with FRC grant 5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is appointments. Town Council appointed, number one, is the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Course Agency, the term of office of Kelly Hemler, Republican, expires 6/30/2025. Reappointment would be until 6/30/2029.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? All in favor of Kelly Hemler? Opposed? And abstentions? It's unanimous. Inland, Wetlands, Water Course Agency, the term of office of Virginia Higley, Democrat, expires on 6/30/2025. Reappointment would be until 6/30/2029.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? And all in favor of Ginny Higley? It is unanimous. And then the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Course Agency, the term of office of Christopher Renaud, Democrat, expires 6/30/2025. Reappointment would be until 6/30/2029.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? And all in favor of Christopher Renaud? It is unanimous. I would like to congratulate all three of them. I think they do a phenomenal job on wetlands and keep up the great work. Next is a resolution to approve the tax amendment to the tax assessment agreement with Woodsonia Acquisitions LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, or his designee is empowered to enter into the amendment to the tax assessment agreement attached hereto in the name and on behalf of the town of Enfield. Date prepared 5/30/2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So this is an extension for the tax agreement, the tax assessment agreement we have. Woodsonia had asked for two years, and I believe the council feels that due to the delay at the state of Connecticut, which wasn't even one year, we're willing to give the one-year extension to them, but we are not willing to do two. So this is a resolution to authorize an extension of one year to the original agreement. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
For.
Counselor Crisati.
For.
Counselor Hendrickson.
For.
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Nasuda.
For.
Mayor Nelson.
For.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
For.
Counselor Russo.
For.
And Counselor Santinella.
For.
10 members in favor, one against.
Okay, next is a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Cost Sharing Agreement with Woodsonia Acquisitions LLC. So now therefore be it resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, or his designee, is empowered to enter into a Second Amendment to the Cost Sharing Agreement attached hereto in the name and on the behalf of the town of Enfield. Date prepared 5/30/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Now, this one is due to a particular lease at the mall. The town of Enfield agreed to match $500,000 with Woodsonia for associated costs to get the project up and going. If Woodsonia does not close on the property, the town of Enfield does not get any money back. We lose it. So the particular lease in question is being difficult, to say the least, and it could cost a lot more. So this agreement is the town of Enfield agreeing to give Woodsonia the $500,000 to use for all leases within the property. Now, I am going to also recommend an amendment to this, that the town of Enfield will match Woodsonia dollar for dollar up to the $500,000 that Woodsonia would owe back to the town of Enfield for the Sears lease only.
I will make that amendment that if you go down to the last bullet, it should read Sears only, not obligated to pay the existing tenants in the mall, including Sears, but it should be only Sears.
No, you got to keep going.
Okay.
Because the Second Amendment removes Woodsonia's obligation to reimburse. We're not removing it.
No, we're not removing that. We're just removing.
No, you're, right, you need to remove that because we're not waiving their obligation to pay us. They still have to pay us, but we are willing to use, match them dollar for dollar for the Sears lease. So if they can get the Sears lease for zero, they still owe us the $500,000. Mike's got a question. Go ahead.
So through the mayor to, so I think we need to do it in the actual agreement, right? So, and I would think it would be, Tom, keep me honest, through the mayor to the town attorney in recitals, Section 1 deposit, right? Is that where it needs to be changed, where it says $500,000, the lease buyout, lease termination fees to tenants should be fees to Sears only?
Okay, Mark Seratos here also. He handled that aspect, so I asked him to stay, and he can perhaps answer that question.
All right, Mark? So if I look, right, if we're going to make the amendment, it should be in recitals under deposit, right?
Right, under deposit. And the way it's worded now, under the agreement, is they have to pay us back the half million we put into it. The amendment that they presented to us, they're basically saying, we're not going to pay you back the half million if we spend more than, excuse me, sorry, if we spend more than a half million trying to buy out the Sears and if there's anybody else involved. So, and I think they've said that's probably going to go over that lumber anyway. I believe they said somewhere.
So if I make an amendment to just Sears only, that's it? The 500 grand goes there, and it's, right?
Yeah, the way this, I mean, the mayor's amendment changes this. It sounds like you're saying, will, if they have to pay Sears, say, whatever the number is, we'll match it.
A million dollars.
Up to a million dollars.
We pay five, they pay five.
Pay five.
If they pay 800, we're paying four, they're paying four.
And then they're going to pay back the 500,000 no matter what?
No, they would owe us the balance, the 100. If it was an 800,000 buyout of the lease that they pay for, we pay for, they owe us the 100,000 dollars.
Just the 100,000 difference. If it's more than that.
Just for that lease.
Just for Sears.
Just for that lease.
We have never discussed any other lease in that building.
So do you recommend, to make sure we have the right language in here?
Yeah, well, I'll put some together, and hopefully we'll work together on it, just make sure I got the flavor of it. So up to, well, the town will go up to a million, you said?
No, we'll go up to the 500,000. I mean, they could go to 10 million if they want, but we're only paying 500.
The total buyout for Sears might be a million. We'll match it for it. Got it. And then the payback, yeah, then there's the paybacks. Okay.
So then I guess that if it says, using Ken's example, if it was 800,000 total it was paid, then the town would get back 100,000.
Correct.
Okay, so we can, we have something to work with with that.
Chris, you follow?
I do. I'll make sure, well, when they give it back to me, I'll make sure that the sentiment that the council's trying to enact will be.
So should we add, just, so we just say, instead of Sheila, just to be, I mean, we have to have language on the resolution.
Exactly, because the way the resolution is worded, without knowing exactly what's being amended in the contract, because, you know, it just refers to the contract. So I guess I'd refer to the town attorney, if I include in the minutes, to amend the cost-sharing agreement that the town will match dollar for dollar up to $500,000 regarding the Sears lease only. Would that?
Actually, I had it different. I have.
Okay.
That they match Woodsonia dollar for dollar up to a million dollars for the Sears lease buyout only because the total's going to be a billion, and when you have Woodsonia with 500,000 and us with 500,000, that's fine. If it goes more than 500,000, Woodsonia pays, we're only going to the 500 ourselves. And if it's less than a million total, then it's divided by two, and we get $500,000 credit, subtracted, we'll then end up with a net. And with the example of 800,000 buyout, we would get back 100,000. So I guess the wording, we're trying to get the wording to match those sentiments in this. So again, I have match, the town would match Woodsonia dollar for dollar up to a million dollars for the Sears lease buyout only. And then we could say, any excess is to be borne solely and exclusively by Woodsonia. And anything less than a million dollars for the buyout will be shared equally with a reimbursement to the town of its one-half interest. Does that make sense? Does that sum it up with you guys?
I'm going to let the attorneys. Go ahead, Gina.
Yeah, Gina.
Can I just have, I have just, I guess, a two-part question. One, why can't we just amend the resolution to say, as amended, as the agreement's amended by the town attorney and approved by the town manager and the council?
I'm sorry, Gina, I didn't hear you.
Why can't we just amend the resolution to say, empowered to enter into a Second Amendment of the Cost Sharing Agreement as amended by the town attorney and approved by the town manager? Period.
That gives you time to work out the language.
That gives you time to work out the language. That was question number one.
That's acceptable. That's fine.
Okay.
And as long as we've got on the record what the intent is here by the council, we all know what it's supposed to be.
So I guess my second part is, I just want to confirm that it sounds like what you're saying is what they're saying, but I think it needs to be specific that it's up to a million dollars with the town of Enfield only paying 50%.
Right.
Good point.
And I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I think it leaves it, you know, into interpretation.
Actually, I was using the phrase, dollar for dollar, matching Woodsonia dollar for dollar is.
Up to a million, right.
Yeah, up to the million.
Period. But Enfield only paying up to 500,000 of that million.
Well, yeah, that's where I had, in the next sentence would be that anything in excess of a million dollars is to be borne solely and exclusively by Woodsonia. For instance, Woodsonia may, they may not be able to buy this out for $2 million.
Right.
Whatever it is. We're rolling in for 500.
I agree with that. I just don't like that. I like it when it says, "Enfield will only pay up to 500,000." Period.
Mine with us.
I just think it's cleaner.
Sure.
Match, match.
I'm with you.
Up to 500,000 dollars for dollars.
Of the reimbursable due.
Yes.
To the town of Enfield.
Which is why I would go back to my first point.
Right, which means.
Let's just make it, my amendment would be to amend the resolution to say that the town manager, Christopher Bronson, or his designee, empowered to enter into a Second Amendment of the Cost Sharing Agreement as amended by the town attorney's office and approved by the town manager.
Yep, is that all right with you?
Yes, because I know the intent, and that way, it's all on our side of the aisle. We've discussed it. We're coming down to the brass tacks. And what I always do, once it's done, I will send it to you before I sign it, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Right.
And then I'll sign it once we all give it a thumbs up.
The 500 they owe us, we're willing to put towards the Sears lease. That's it.
And Tom's right.
Correct.
And Tom's right. I just don't want to, I just don't want to get into the weeds, like, right here.
No, no, no.
Where I think everybody understands the intention. I agree.
I just missed you. You got to say a little louder, Gina. You said, "Tom's right." I just want to hear that.
I did. And you should hear, Mike and I actually get along in general government, too.
All right, there's an amendment to the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion as amended? Or roll call? Is this on the amendment? Yes. Or we got to vote on the amendment first?
You just did a hand count on the amendment. You did a hand count on the amendment.
All in favor of the amendment to the motion? It's unanimous. Okay, roll call for the motion.
The motion as amended.
Yes.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
For.
Counselor Crisati.
For.
Counselor Hendrickson.
For.
Counselor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Nasuda.
For.
Mayor Nelson.
For.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
For.
Counselor Russo.
For.
Counselor Santinella.
For.
11 members in favor and none against.
Thank you. The next is a resolution to approve a modification of the Credit Enhancement Agreement with Woodsonia Acquisitions LLC. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorizes the town manager to modify the Credit Enhancement Agreement with Woodsonia Acquisitions LLC so that the town will refund 100% of any taxes deposited into TIF fund up to $19,500,000, and 50% of any taxes deposited in the TIF fund in excess of the $19,500,000 up to $23,500,000. The town will retain any amounts paid into TIF in excess of $23,500,000. Be it further resolved, the Credit Enhancement Agreement will begin in the fiscal year following the completion of the Tax Abatement Agreement and will expire after the earliest of 10 years or the refunding of the $23,500,000 from the TIF fund. Date prepared 5/30/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So my question is, I'm sorry, Mike, but shouldn't it be 195 million? They're building this for a lot more than $19 million. The town will refund 100% of any taxes deposited.
Yeah, but we're talking town.
So the way the Credit Enhancement Agreements work is that, well, the way the TIF district works is we established an assessed value as of the base year. For that, all those parcels, that was about 12.8 million, I believe. Yeah, 12.85 million. that was about 12.8 million, I believe. Yeah, 12.85 million. So that was 2018. So that tax, the tax on that 12.85 million always goes into the general fund. The increase in tax, the tax on any increase in value is split between the town, the town general fund and the TIF fund. Okay? So for, in this case, what they are requesting is a refund of 100% of the portion that goes into the TIF fund. Okay? So the town still gets all the benefit of the taxes on the original assessed value and the increase, and 50% of the increase on it. That all goes into the general fund. And so they had kept that at what their discussions were, was to get 100% up to 19 and a half million, and then the next 4 million would be split 50/50. Well, there was split, any remaining 50/50 up to a total of $4 million to a total cap of 23 million, 23 and a half million.
That's for the total of the 10 years?
Yes.
That's not per year?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's why the numbers are totally different. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Go ahead, Mike.
I misread this. John, what, how is this different than the original agreement?
The original, what we had discussed originally.
Did we?
We did not. We did 100% in the first year, then it was a declining by 2% each year, so that some stayed in, in there.
That's right. So when I reread this, I apologize. I, I agree. I.
After the cap?
So is it, no, so the initial agreement was the first, so that first 19 million would just say it each year went, started on the first.
Not the initial, it would be, we would give that, let's say, $100,000 went into the TIF district. We would give them 100,000 in the first year. The second year was 100,000. We would give them 98,000. Third year, we'd give them 96,000.
And now we're giving them 100,000 for every year?
We're giving 100,000 every year up until they get to a set amount.
Thank you for explaining it. I agree. I think, I don't know. I have to admit, I apologize because I misread this. I misread this. I mean, I don't know if I agree with this. But thank you for the explanation, John. I think 100% is a little too generous. But I think the, for right now, John, keep me honest, though. I thought, I thought we couldn't do 100% all, is this for 10 years, right, basically?
Yeah, it depends on, you know, it depends on what the actual assessed value is.
Didn't we pass a resolution when we established the TIF district at the most, I thought it was 50%. I thought there was a resolution passed back when we established the TIF district.
No, I don't believe, not, so the, the master plan designates how much goes to the general fund and how much to the TIF district.
But we have a policy.
The policy that, that goes along with that allows there to be credit enhancement agreements. That's, that's what this is. And I do not know of any limitation on the amount of the credit enhancement agreement. Now, the, the TIF committee generally looks to try and use now more than 50% of the amount that goes into the TIF district, but this is a rather unique situation here.
Thank you for the, appreciate the explanation, and I have to admit, I misunderstood the 100%, so thank you.
I think the, the 50% is, it has, 50% has to go to the town, because that's when they tried to push it to 75. We were like, absolutely not.
But they also changed 100%. That wasn't 100% for the first night, whatever. I think it was 10 years, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
John, just looking at, so the dollar value, is that somewhere in some of this, what you're projecting we would lose by agreeing to 100% every year? I'm sure they know the number. That's why they asked.
Well, I mean, I, I had the original schedule in there.
Yep.
Okay, that was, that was the original amount. You know, every, there are, there are a lot of variables in this, okay? My original numbers here, for one thing, are based on, this was done last spring. So we didn't have 2005, or 2025's mill rate, let alone 2026's. So I adjusted the current schedules to, based on what, on the current mill rate, you know? So using, using the 31.5 that was adopted for FY '26. So I mean, you're kind of talking, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables and stuff that, to really determine how much would be, the other, I mean, the other biggest variable is what the, the assessed value ends up being. Because these, you know.
Right, but the number you put in at 15 million returned to them.
Yes.
That was based on the 10 years at the.
That was based on our original, right, based on our original estimates. And then, give me one second. I need to get back to that page.
So you didn't do an updated version? I'm just looking at the original.
Well, I have the original, and then the next two pages are the, are the, but there's some variability in, in what would be given back to them.
So is the original one, really, right?
Right. And it also showed that, I mean, their original, based on my, if, based on their original assessed value estimate of $91 million for the, for the whole project, they wouldn't hit that. I believe $91 million is low. That's my just opinion of it, based on their spending, 250 million. So I put in one showing where it would hit, so I could illustrate what that would look like. And, you know, I just used 150 million in that, in that illustration to show what it would look like.
Okay, so it's like a million seven is what you kind of threw in here, the difference?
Yeah.
For the 10 years, based on estimates, anyway. Okay. Thank you, John.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to interject so that there's no equivocation later. You know, this matter has been negotiated back and forth over a period of time, and at each juncture, I've asked John, does he support it, each and every one of these modifications? Because if he didn't, I wouldn't. And I know it is a council decision. It's a policy decision. We would always support what the council ultimately decides. But as always with John, I have asked him, is this something you believe is in the best interest of the town? John has told me he believes it is, that in the long run is very advantageous to the town, but I would like him to have the opportunity to say that on his own, so that you and folks at home understand his feeling about the amendment. John?
So, yes, I do, I do support this. I do go, one of the things, when, when people are asking me about tax abatement agreements or these, I try to make sure that the town is not going to be any worse off and has the potential to be a lot better in the future. Or, you know, we talked about businesses not losing value on businesses in the revaluations. We need to try and get businesses into town to help shift that burden away from the resident, the, the individual residents into the, to the corporate side. I, when we did our original analysis, and I still believe it with this delay in the abatement agreement, that the town will end up collecting more money over that first 10-year period than we would have in the, from, from the mall, just deteriorating over, over the next 10 years. Okay? So if, if this agreement, if you, we've already agreed to that one, but I believe that one will generate more tax revenue for the town than the, than just leaving it if we didn't have the agreement. And then this still generates an awful lot more revenue for the town, you know? Like I said, there's a lot of variables on it, but any way you look at it, it's a lot of money for, that the town stands to gain. We're, we're giving up some that goes into the TIF district, but that's, you know, it's, it's a big project. I think it's, I think overall it does benefit the town.
Right. But just to be clear, we're not giving up anything. We don't have the money now. So every dollar is a positive, not a negative.
That is absolutely correct.
One cent, this is costing the taxpayers of Enfield.
That's right.
They are going to make, hopefully prevent many, many tax increases over the next 50 years because of this project, millions. So I just want to be clear. When people say we're losing, we're not losing, we're losing part of what the increase could be if the deal goes together. If it doesn't go together, I'm sure we're going to lose because they're going to appeal the taxes again at the mall. It's going to keep going down. Go ahead, Bob. So just one last question. So these are coming up now because they're trying to close on this deal with Nandar, that this is?
It's my understanding that they're seeking financing in order to close. I don't know when the closing is, but they need these documents in order to, they need all the ducks in a row in order to pursue their financing and confirm it.
Okay. And I agree. I just, we had an agreement, and then they're coming back for changes, and I'm, I'm assuming it's based on they didn't get 20 million. That's, they only got 10 million, so they're trying to make up some of that. That's just what I'm
Just for the record, too, this, this CIF agreement was actually negotiated on behalf of the town by Matt Ritter in Shipman and Goodwin. And Matt Ritter has sent us an email saying that he thinks it's, it's okay. I'm disappointed he wasn't on tonight, but he maybe has other stuff going on. And with the remote, we initially thought it was going to be at 6:00, then it's at 7:00. So people do have other lives, too. But he has confirmed to Mark and I in emails that he thinks it's in the best interest of the town also.
Well, I mean, this is definitely a better deal for them because they're getting 100% instead of a sliding scale now, as Councilman Ludwig said. But we put the cap on it. So, I mean, I hope they spend 500 million, and we would really benefit at that point. But at this point, I didn't want to do this in executive session. I wanted to bring it up here on the floor. I want the people, the taxpayers of Enfield, know what the potential possibilities of the increase in new revenue taxes to the town of Enfield will be. And hopefully, this is the end of the negotiating with them. And all I can say is, I think Enfield went above and beyond. We are invested in this way more than the state of Connecticut is. And a big part of it is the revitalization of the center of Enfield. So there is a huge community benefit to this project, and that's why I do support this. And it has been a contentious battle for quite some time with them. And hopefully, we put that all behind us, move forward, and we can start bulldozing the mall. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Against.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
And Counselor Santinella?
Four.
10 members in favor, one against.
Thank you very much, Sheila. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Tom. And thank you, Chris. Next is a resolution regarding Hernandez versus the Board of Education. So we have. Resolved, the Enfield Town Council hereby approves and accepts the agreement reducing the attorney's fees and litigation expenses from $1,024,945.80 to?
$685,000.
To $685,000 in Sarah Hernandez versus Enfield Board of Education and the town of Enfield. Civil action number 319 CV-01907-SRU. Be it further resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the interim town attorney or is designated to execute on behalf of the town and the Board of Education and documents required to resolve this issue of attorney's fees and litigation expenses in the above referenced case. Date prepared 5:30 2025, prepared by Town Attorney's Office.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So I'm going to refer this to the town attorney, but in this short amount of time, I think a $300,000 reduction, I think you made the right call, Tom. And I want to commend you and your staff.
Thanks. If you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Just for the public and the council to, like to recite some history on it, just so people understand. This case started about six years ago when the suit was filed. It involves a claim by a Board of Education member that the board violated the plaintiff's rights under the American with Disabilities Act, and that it did not accommodate her disability. And in January of 2024, five years after it was filed, approximately, it went to trial. On June 14th of 2024, a jury verdict was rendered for the plaintiff and awarded her $10. So it found on her behalf, but also found the damages were only $10. However, that monetary award entitles her to then seek attorney's fees and court costs for the lawyers to prosecute this claim for her. While that was pending and after trial, she then applied for and got injunctive relief against the town of Enfield, requiring the Board of Education to promulgate some policies and procedures in order to accommodate people with disabilities, including members of the board, in the future. I've underst, I understand that Jim Talberg handled that for the town and the Board of Ed, and that that has already been now accomplished. It's been put into effect. And so that part of the injunction's over. What the plaintiff sought in fees initially was about $1.4 million. Attorney Talberg had objected. That then was reduced by the judge on March 7th of 2025 to a total of $1,024,945.80. So for our purposes, let's say $1,025,000 that the town of Enfield has to pay for the transgression of a Board of Education that's not even this board, it's years ago board. And they had never had an incident like this before, so it's an isolated incident even by the board. So then you come to the town of Enfield that has to pay this, and it's, it's a tremendous burden on a local community, any community. But when that had come in, and we had a chance to look at it, we at the town attorney's office, when I say we, it's myself, Mark Serrato, Sue Roach, and now Larry. But we took a look at it, and what bothered us was, it just seemed so excessive for a community like Enfield to be punished like this, where this money could be better used for reducing class sizes, fixing potholes, getting more police officers, senior center, all sorts of, fixing Will Star Circle with the, the paving. I mean, all these different things, it just seemed wrong to us. So on that basis, we took a look and, and came up with what we thought was a defect in the judge's decision. He had written a 12-page decision that was, appeared to be very well reasoned, very well documented. But he had a footnote on one page where he talked about the 12 factors that he considered in, in awarding attorney's fees. And these are factors that, when you go to law school, you learn them, because this is how you make sure you get paid correctly. And one of the, one of the factors he considered, and if you'll bear with me, just so people understand, one of the factors he talked about was, he wanted to give the lawyers more money here because it was, it was an undesirable case that they, they took on. And the judge explained that his reasoning was that he was concerned that the lawyers wouldn't, weren't getting paid enough money unless they got more, because this was a undesirable case. So in looking into it, we, we. case. So in looking into it, we recollected, when we went to law school, the undesirability of a case as a factor in fees has nothing to do with how much money you're going to make. It has to do with your popularity in the community. And the best example I ever saw was a case where John Adams represented British soldiers in the Boston massacre, who had massacred colonials and Americans. So in representing them, the community was outraged against John Adams. So that's the type of example for undesirability of a case for a lawyer to take. This law firm was nowhere near the town of Enfield, and it didn't have the publicity or the stigma of representing somebody with a disability. So on that basis, we did reach out and hired Wes Horton, who's an expert in this. They agreed with us. We went to the mediation, well, we filed a notice of intent to appeal, Second Circuit Court of Appeals in New York City. And there was a mediation hearing last Thursday, in which I participated for the town. And what they came up with was a reduction down to the 865 level, taking into account, we were right. The judge's footnote was, he had the case wrong. And the Second Circuit in another matter had already made that determination in a different case about this undesirability factor. So I'm sorry to bore people too much with this, but that is the reason we now got down from the $1,025,000 to the 865. Additionally, there's interest that was due on the $1,025,000 that's also being eliminated with this. So the net, the gross to the town is somewhere over $340,000 in a reduction. And we do have to pay Wes Horton's bill. So far, it was $16,200, but it may be as high as $40,000 or $50,000. But we're still happy with that in the sense that the net to the town savings is going to be 300, maybe a little bit more than the 300,000. And we're not jumping for joy on it, only because we were concerned about having to pay the 865. It takes the sting out of $1,025,000. But again, we could use it for a lot better things. And we wish the federal courts would perhaps take that into consideration when they're awarding different awards for things of this nature, especially where the plaintiff was awarded $10. So on that basis, we'd urge you to accept it. And also thank the council for having the confidence in the town attorney's office with us to allow us to do this, because we were the only ones that said, we think we want to try this avenue of an appeal, where everyone else was saying, don't appeal because the judge will be mad at you, or you'll have more attorney's fees coming the other side, and so on. So thank you for having the confidence in us. And we appreciate and hope that you would approve it, and we get this resolved within a few days.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I just want to, a couple, just real quick questions. So how much was she awarded? Again, can you repeat that?
$10.
$10. And the attorney charged how much for her legal defense?
The initial bill that they put in, let's see, was $1,366.62, or excuse me, $1,366,062.17, including the costs.
To get her $10. You tell me that the judges and attorneys at the federal level aren't working together because they sure don't have the best interest of their clients at heart. $10.
I gotta tell you too, Talberg objected at that point, filed very good objections, and did get a reduction, substantial reduction from that, down to the $1,025,000 level. But that was it. And they thought that that's the end. You can't do anymore. And again, the judge is a very respected, well-respected judge. But part of his decision also talked about that he would like to have given her some emotional distress money, but he couldn't do it.
Because the law prevents him.
But this may have been a workaround to get that money done. But the workaround on the backs of the Enfield taxpayers for this, where we've, it's an isolated incident, never happened before, not going to happen again. And for the taxpayers to have that burden is a tough pill to swallow. So it's a pyrrhic victory that we have. But we're thrilled that we were able to at least save this money, which can be better spent on all the things you people talked about earlier tonight.
So the jury, this was a jury trial, right?
Jury verdict of $10.
Okay, so the jury ordered $10. The judge didn't like it, couldn't get her emotional damages, so he hijacked the attorney's fees.
Well, I'm not gonna
I just want the taxpayers to hear how skewed our legal system is in this country, because this is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And the sad part is, this could have been settled for tens of thousands, not millions of dollars, years and years ago. And it had nothing to do with the town council. But here we are having, or all the taxpayers are having to foot the bill here. So I'm done talking about this. We close it on, move to the next chapter. Anybody else have any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
And Counselor Santinella? He's gone, sorry. 10 members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is a resolution authorizing the submission of proposals to the state of Connecticut for the 2025 Neighborhood Assistant Act. Be it resolved, the Enfield town manager or their designee is hereby authorized to submit three proposals for the Hazardville Institute Conservancy Society, Inc., Enfield Food Shelf, Inc., and People for People, Inc., Enfield Safe Harbors Warming Center, to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services under the provisions of the Neighborhood Assistance Act, and to approve any donations received as a result of this submission.
So moved.
Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded. So, Councilman Hendrickson.
Okay. So I think I misread this last year also. But so this is just a corporate business tax credit. Yeah, please. Thank you, Christie. So we have to sign off on putting their application forward for a corporate business tax credit specifically for that
Correct, yeah.
... organization. Because just reading it, I mean, it looks like some of it's paid salaries and stuff, but we don't, that's just minutia that we don't involve ourselves with. It's a business that wants to give them money.
Yes, we're kind of the administrative middlemen, pretty much. So
Okay.
The nonprofit comes to us. They give us the proposal and the project description. We then give it to you guys to review. If you guys approve it, then I will forward that over to Department of Revenue Services. They review the proposals. They confirm if it's eligible or not. And then sometime in mid-August, they'll let us know, okay, out of these three proposals, these are the amounts that we approve. Now it's the nonprofit's turn to go to businesses and try to find those cash contributions. So it's all on the nonprofit side. It's just more so, we're the administrative people that help them through the process.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So I'm okay with the first two. I'm not okay with the last one. Because the last one is a warming shelter for north central Connecticut. Why in Enfield? I mean, I don't recall seeing East Windsor, Summers, all our surrounding towns, who send their homeless population to Enfield to use this shelter, contributing. So I mean, here we are, Enfield, as Mike said earlier, not on this particular one, but Enfield always seems to get it up the wazoo for some reason. And, you know, it's time we start standing our ground and sticking up for our own residents here. So I will be okay with the first two, but not the last one. So I don't know if anybody would make a motion on that. Go ahead, Cindy.
I'm not going to make a motion. I'm going to disagree with you in the sense that if we have the capability here in Enfield to take in less fortunate individuals, pretty much on an emergency basis, then we're fortunate in that respect. So I don't look at it as a deterrent. I look at it more of an asset, that we're fortunate that we can do this. I do support this resolution, and thank you for your hard work.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Okay, so I just want to be clear on this. This is nothing to do with taxpayer dollars. This is choice. So the nonprofits will go to businesses who will freely donate to this nonprofit. So if these nonprofits go and the businesses say, no, we're not going to give you anything, then they get nothing.
That is correct, yes. So the businesses, they're making a cash contribution that can be returned as a tax credit. So there are, the Hazardville Institute, theirs is 100% tax credit, where the Warming Center and the Food Shelf, I believe those are 60% tax credits. But it is 100% on the nonprofit to go out to businesses. So the Warming Center, they can go to businesses in those other areas as well and have them contribute. But it is strictly on the nonprofit to get those cash contributions, and it's the businesses' ability to pay or not. So if there have been in the past that they don't receive any business contribution, so they receive no funds for this project, through this program specifically.
So we're just the go-between?
Correct.
We just give them the paperwork kind of thing, or?
Yeah, we just go from the nonprofit to DRA, or to Department of Revenue Services, and then give them the information if it was approved or not. So we're just the middlemen.
Why?
Each town has a staff, or has a municipal liaison who's just, instead of, I don't know if it's for the Department of Revenue Services to make it easier on them, instead of having a bunch of nonprofits going out to them. But each town or city has their own liaison. I'm the liaison for Enfield, so.
And this money can come, or they can go to businesses anywhere. They could go anyplace.
Correct. Yes, they can go anywhere, as long as the, I know the website has additional information specifically on what kind of businesses, but a corp, yeah, any corporations. Don't quote me on that, because I can't find it. They're
Do you know if they're, which ones were successful last year?
Hazardville Institute has always had success. I know Opera House players in the past have applied. This year, they didn't apply. They refused, they received a few contributions in the past. But it's mainly been Hazardville Institute that's been the most successful.
Okay.
Councilman Ludwig.
Thanks, Chrissy. So do you get notified if they do get money from a corporation?
So I get notified towards December. We get sent, the liaisons get sent a list on all the approved programs, and then I give that information to the nonprofits.
This is a dumb question. Can't a business, now, if they want to donate to someone, they could anyways, and can't they write that off in their federal taxes?
You got me. I'm not going to answer that.
I think so.
That's why I don't understand why we're even involved.
I think so, right? I mean, it's a charitable donation. So I'm not just curious, because
Just a program through Department of Revenue Services that they've used every single year, and it's been successful for other towns. Tried to get their word out with nonprofits. That's why there's the Food Shelf and the Warming Center. But it's something that I definitely want to spread the word about more in the future, because there's a lot of nonprofits that could benefit from this. It doesn't have to be large, huge, $100,000 projects. It can be smaller things. It's really just getting the word out, I think, is the biggest thing.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make one more thing. I would like to have a motion to have these votes individual for each one, instead of all three grouped together. Because as it is, I'm going to have to vote no. So if somebody will entertain that, we'll vote on each one Seeing none?
I'll make a motion that we
Amended.
amend it so that we vote on each one individually.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Okay. So now we'll vote on the first one, this as amended. So we are going to vote on the Hazardville Institute first.
Good job, Mr. Murphy.
No, the institute is first. All in favor of the institute? Unbelievable. All in favor of the Food Shelf, Enfield Food Shelf? Opposed?
I abstain.
You're not abstaining? Yeah, but you don't financially gain off of this. You don't get paid, do you?
I vote for it.
No?
No. Okay.
All right. All in favor again? It's unanimous. And the Enfield Safe Harbors Warming Center? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. So the first two passed, the last one doesn't. Now, do you want to vote on that? So we'd basically be removing safe harbors from this, Sheila. And so do we make a motion to remove safe harbors from this, oh my God, resolution? And then vote as amended?
We kind of effectively did that by our three votes. So I think it's just voting as amended at this point.
Okay, right. Vote as, the whole document is amended?
Yes.
So at this time, roll call for the document, for the resolution as amended.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Counselor Sikala? Against.
Counselor Crisati?
Against.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Four.
Against?
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
Seven in favor, three against.
Thank you. Okay, next is a resolution authorizing the sale of One Knox Street. Be it resolved, the town manager or their designee is authorized to sign a real estate purchase and sale agreement and any other documents on behalf of the town of Enfield for the sale of One Knox Street to Juan J. Gonzalez, subject to review and approval by the town attorney, date prepared 5/23/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
10 in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a resolution authorizing the sale of Nathan Hale. Be it resolved, the town manager or their designee is authorized to sign the real estate purchase and sale agreement and any other documents on behalf of the town of Enfield for the sale of Five Taylor Road and the abutting parcel map located at map 110 and lots 0003 to
Christie?
Do you need those stickied?
To our town homebuyers LLC, subject to review and approval by the town attorney, date prepared 5/23/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. I will entertain a motion to amend this, where the recommendation, and it reads as follows, the recommendation, the town council approves this resolution if they desire to authorize the town council, and it should not be council, it should be town manager, or their designees to sign. So I'd like to make a motion to amend it instead of town council on the second line, first words, to town manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? It's unanimous. Roll call on the
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, my question, pretty much Okay, my question, pretty much, with regards to the purchase and sale, are we going to amend the changes that we talked about, or are we just going to leave it the way it is?
We discussed it all.
Right, we discussed all of that, and we see the input from the town attorney's office, so he will make all the changes, council.
He'll make the changes appropriately.
Will make the changes, and then I, once they are done, I will sign it.
All right, thank you.
We authorize what you, like, what you want.
What you and I talked about, or agreed to.
Yep. Good. How's that?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Thank you, Christie.
Councilor Mangini.
Thank you, Christie.
Oh, four, sorry.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing the town to submit a community investment fund, CIF, application for planning funds, whereas pursuant to CGS Section 32-285A, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and whereas it is desirable and in the public's interest that the town of Enfield make an application to the state for $250,000 in order to undertake planning for town-owned historic buildings and to execute an assistance agreement, now therefore be it resolved by the town council, one, that is, that it is cognizant of the conditions of the prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by CGS 32-285A, and two, that the filing of an application for the state financial assistance by the town of Enfield in an amount not to exceed $250,000 is hereby approved, and that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, or his designee, is directed to execute and file such applications with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for the state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Enfield, date prepared 5/21/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing the town to submit a community investment fund, CIF, application for the Hazardville Institute.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of waiving the reading?
Just like.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Roll call, please.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Against.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Against.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Eight members in favor, two against.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to clarify, the town has authorized two CIF applications, one for the Hazardville Institute and one for the planning grant. We're not authorizing any other CIF applications at this time. So I would ask our state reps and senator to sign on to these, because we're not asking for any other ones. So anybody who does anything other than these two is not doing what the town of Enfield wants, and I'm making that very clear right now, because I'm pretty sure one of our state reps doesn't think he needs the council and wants to sign on to another CIF application and not the ones the town is asking to be signed on for, which is absolutely ridiculous. So I just wanted to put that out there. Sure?
I just want to make a clarification that part of the council is only authorizing two CIF.
The majority of the council voted, which wins.
So you asked, I asked if I could respond. Can I just respond, please?
Yes.
Thank you. You may not support any other CIF applications or projects, but some of us do. So that's what I'm going to say.
So if we vote no on a SOAR project and you vote yes, do we just do your share of it and not the rest? That's ridiculous. The town voted, you win some, you lose some, and on this particular one, some of you even voted for these. So these are the ones the town of Enfield is requesting.
They're not mutually exclusive, and please don't lecture me.
Okay. Moving on. Resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a three-year lease with Lenovo Financial Services.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All in favor? All right, are there any questions on this? This is just the lease for the technology for Paul Russell. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Next is a resolution to settle a property tax assessment appeal for 91 Simon Road, resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the interim town attorney or his designee to settle the outstanding tax assessment appeal in the following action, CDW Inc. versus Town of Enfield, docket number HHB-CV-24-6086955-S, per the terms of the stipulation attached heretofore, date prepared 5/27/2025, prepared by the Office of the Town Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
I mean, sorry, Councilor Ungeyer.
Who's?
I'm getting tired, sorry.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four again.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
That's ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing the town manager to sign an easement from the town to the state of Connecticut for property on As Nuntuck Street Main slash Main Street. Be it resolved, that Christopher W. Bronson, town manager or his designee, is authorized to sign the attached easement from the town of Enfield to the state of Connecticut, date prepared 5/29/2025, prepared by the Office of the Town Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Okay, next is items for discussion, the Community Development Block Grant Program Income Reuse.
So I thought we indicated we were going to do a special meeting for this, given that.
We may not even need to. Okay, so we did discuss this in our caucus, and I believe, unless some of our caucus has changed, we feel that the money should stay where it's at, because they are very, very great, they're great programs for the town of Enfield's residents. Residents, not commercial. So we have TIF, we have other programs for businesses in town. This is loans for homeowners that fall on tough times, that need repairs. This is money for first-time homebuyers, which we were talking about earlier. It's getting harder and harder for people to buy houses. People listening, the town of Enfield will give you $10,000 to buy a home. I mean, yes, you heard it, you lived there 10 years, you owe nothing. Every year you live there, it eliminates part of the money. Also, if you're having problems with your home, your boiler breaks, Enfield has a very low-interest loan, they will give you the money to fix your boiler. So these are programs, I just don't think we're doing a good enough job getting them out there. Who doesn't want $10,000 to buy a home? I don't get it.
I think, I think what we need is.
In Thompsonville and North Thompsonville.
We'll work.
Owner-occupied, right, buy a home.
We'll work with Erin and Christie to get this out on our social media and on our sites, to really push these programs, so that people can utilize them, that need them.
So this is, this is an item for discussion, and I believe our caucus is unanimous, we want to keep the money where it's at. So we don't need special meetings, we need to promote it. And thank you, if you could get it out there. Karen and Gretchen are correct, it is Thompsonville and parts of North Thompsonville. But again, make the phone call. Call Community Development, ask them, the money's there. People have used it, and it was a great program, and let's revive it. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I just have one question for Erin and Christie. So the income requirements on this, they used to be rather low. Have you, have they been adjusted at all? Because my concern is, if they're too low, will somebody be able to qualify for an actual mortgage?
And that's what, I did a presentation that kind of explains why these programs aren't working. Oh, yikes, don't want to see myself. I'll just go over very quickly. So, oops. All right, so the current use of our CDBG program income, which is, like I said in my highlight document, that these are funds that we've received grants from Department of Housing for the past few decades, and anytime we have used these funds for either our housing rehab or our first-time homebuyer loan programs, once the property is sold or the owner moves, or they pass away or anything like that, those funds are then paid back to the town, and then they go back into their respective pots of money for both of the programs, and that's what program income. So with our housing rehab, we currently have $175,000 about in our funding, and our project manager, who is the one that actually runs this program for us, because the scope of work, they have to do cost estimates and stuff like that, where we don't have the capacity to do that in-house, so we have to go out and hire a contractor, or, excuse me, a program manager who specializes in these throughout the state. So his contract expired last year, and he did not renew it. We have to go up to RFP if we do continue to run this program, so it's currently on hold. We have found very, it's been very difficult to run this program administratively, and trying to find bidders and contractors that will actually do this work. We go with the lowest responsible bidder, and the past four or five projects that we've done, it's kind of like pulling teeth to get people to go to our walkthroughs and to get reputable contractors. One of our last program, or projects that we've done, there are two bidders, and neither of them were responsible, and we had to ultimately stop that project, and the owner didn't want to go forward with it. So it's just been very hard to keep this program going. I've done presentations at the senior center, at the library, to promote these programs. Just unfortunately, people aren't interested. It's a very timely process, and we were able to do a few emergency situations that, whether a boiler broke during the winter, that kind of stuff, but it just, it's a very hard program to move forward. And then with our first-time homebuyer program, I know that was on hold for a while, we brought it back in 2019, instead of focusing just on Thompsonville. That is just a forgivable loan, where everywhere else in Enfield is also available. We were getting a pretty good amount of applications in, and then obviously COVID happened, and the housing market just exploded. So at this point, it has been incredibly difficult, obviously, for low to moderate-income residents to buy a home, and our program is up to $10,000 for closing costs or down payment, where this program was specifically made an offer to be kind of the gap funding of just those few extra thousand dollars that someone needs to close on a home, whether it be for the closing cost or the down payment. And at this point, one of the biggest things that we look at is debt-to-income ratio, and when we're, since these funds have to be going towards low to moderate-income residents, we're finding it difficult for people to be eligible with the income that they have for their family. And I just realized, I didn't actually answer your question. So to kind of circle back to that, I apologize. So for a one-person household, so it's based on HUD requirements, so for a one-person household, I believe it's up to $70,000. For a two-person household, I believe it's about $81,000. Three, I believe it's about $90,000, and then four-family, I believe it goes up to a thousand, or $100,000. So it is based on the households together, so whether you have a baby, or kids, or a spouse, or anything like that, they're all counted as an additional person. So the last that we had, the application received was back in May of 2023, which is two years ago, and that was approved back in July of 2023 as well. So I completely respect everything that you're saying regarding keeping the money where it is, but I just want to let you guys know of where these programs stand. I know in the past, I believe Councilor Ludwig has brought these up, because you're on the Loan Review Committee, they've honestly just been really hard programs to administer, to push. We also check if people owe sewer, or taxes, or anything like that, that usually disqualifies people as well. They are absolutely amazing programs, and I wish that we could get more people involved, and we could give this money out. I know DOH really wants us to spend down this program income, but ultimately, these two programs are not being used currently, and I feel that there are better uses for these funds, because I know at some point, DOH is going to want this money back, and so it's kind of a use-it-or-lose-it situation. We don't have a waitlist for housing rehab or the first-time homebuyer programs. I haven't received a call on either of their programs, to be honest, in probably about a year. And I know we're, with everything coming on in Thompsonville, and sorry, just kind of go through my slides at this point. So the Census Track 4806, which is Thompsonville, specifically, so on the left-hand side in green, probably should have used a brighter color, I apologize, but this is the area that, this commercial facade program, if we do decide to use it, these funds for that, it would be included in that area. These are just a few examples, but this is something that we can spend the money on very quickly, and spend it down, make DOH happy, and also see our funds being used. Because I know with these programs, they're, again, they're great programs, but this is something that we can actually see the funds going towards very quickly. I mean, with my, sorry, should I just stop? So, yeah, just ultimately, it would, it would be great to use this, but totally understand.
So again, you just showed pictures of commercial properties.
Yes.
They have TIF.
True.
They can use.
Yes, and there's something else.
What do our homeowners have, especially in Thompsonville, who are just barely getting by?
Mm-hmm.
They got nothing.
Yes.
by? They got nothing. They got nowhere to turn. So if somebody loses a furnace, whether it's this winter or three winters from now, they should be able to call this town and get some help. And if we had somebody apply for a house in 2023, they're going to come back around, because this market can't stay this way much longer. Other parts of the country are already crashing, so it's coming. Again, if you want to bring this up on loan review, Mike, and, but I'm not, I want to leave the money where it is, and see if maybe you can come up with
Yeah, you know, this is my, this is my baby. I think, is there a way, because we can shift some of the rehab money to the first-time homeowners, is there a way to get to the young, I mean, there's young folks, they're, I mean, I'm seeing it, I'm not a realtor, but a young couple that we're trying to keep in town, they're trying to buy a home, and it's $300,000, $400,000, way overpriced. They must be able to qualify to get some, and we talked about this last time we met.
Yep.
About using the money for someone to purchase a multifamily, they live in a multifamily, so they learn small business skills, because they're running, you know, basically a business. I think there's options, and I know, you know, I agree, I don't want to move it to any more commercial, and especially with REVAL coming, and again, the shift has been to the property owner. I think we, if there's ways within the regulations, can we reach out to the housing authority and say, you know, can we use this for folks who may be making a little more money, but they can't buy a house?
No, so this is strictly on HUD.
How does it not, so how does HUD not keep up with the price of a home?
Exactly.
Versus, I mean, I mean, right now, I mean, I'm sorry, our young people are in trouble.
And that's why, yeah, this is such a great program, it just, we're so tight with the guidelines with HUD and Department of Housing. I wish that we could expand it, but how these funds are transferred to us, that's one thing that we can't.
Is it a federal or state program?
So it's a federal. So the funds start with US, so Department of Housing.
Can we reach out to our federal folks and say, can we get, I mean, there's tons of things going on in Washington right now.
I mean, we can surely try, I can't guarantee anything, but yeah.
It's not just Enfield. Look, it depends what you look. Young people all over the country can't afford a home. I mean, this is, so we should be able to hopefully shift some guidelines to help them afford a home.
Yeah, and it is great where, I've noticed over the past six or seven years, that the income limits have drastically increased. I know with a one person, I believe, maybe five or six years ago, it was like $45,000, and now it's up to $70,000. So they are changing with the times, however, they're very restrictive, so.
I know you do a great job.
So the income, I think they're eligible to buy a home. Unfortunately, currently in Connecticut still, for that one home that comes available, very rarely, that's within the budget, there's 20 offers on it within 24 hours, and as a seller, they're going to look and say, he's paying cash, no inspections, as is? I ain't waiting for them, and it's going to come back around, and I'm just not willing to give up on it. Maybe in loan review, you guys could work out a little, refine it a little more or something, but they are, have adjusted it, because $70,000 up to $100,000. Last time I looked at it, it wasn't that high.
Yeah, I have a
It's good to hear that they're adjusting it. So I apologize, but
No worries.
I think it's too valuable of a program for our residents in town.
Get people signing up, because they're going to take our money soon, so let's do it.
I think that's the big point, just come back to us before they take the money back, and what works.
Who?
The feds are going to take the money back if we don't spend it, so.
People are watching right now. They're saying, oh, we're going to call Kristi tomorrow.
My contact information right there. Call me up. Happy to talk to you.
Giving away $10,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business proper to come before said meeting? Seeing none. Public communication, is there anyone who would like to come speak to the council? Gretchen?
Just in case. Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, Por Summers Road. Couple comments, couple questions. First question is, what is the status of the volunteer tax credit program? And regarding, I think it was Councilman Hendrickson's comment about flags on businesses, there's also those little signs everywhere. They're cropping up like mushrooms. And I own property in Thompsonville, and I see lots and lots of cars with Massachusetts license plates, so I think there are a lot of renters who live in town who don't bother to re-register their vehicles in town. And regarding the Connecticut River, Attorney Tyler's suggestion about reaching out to Attorney General Tong was, was one that I thought of, and also that our, our state senator and state reps should also be advocating on, on behalf as well. And Karen LaPlante mentioned to me that the Connecticut River Conservancy is a great resource, that they have advocated and done a lot of advocacy with Springfield to update their stormwater and sewer plants. So that is an organization that the town should be supporting as well, because they do great work for the Connecticut River. And regarding the bike path and the guardrail, I think another option that you could consider would be bollards, to prevent vehicles from driving through that bike path, and to landscape that, where the, where the road has changed with trees, and so that cars won't want to go through there, besides just, I know a guardrail might do the trick, but it's not very attractive. Lastly, I want to thank you all for approving our application for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, as well as our CIF grant. But I also want to say that it's sort of disappointing that it feels like our nonprofits have sort of been pitted against each other. And we support all nonprofits to apply for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. We all work hard for our organizations, and raising money is, is very difficult, and it's just, it's sort of sad to feel like we've been kind of politicized here, when all of our organizations are working for the betterment of, of everybody in our town. And I guess that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilman Communications. Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.